Okay, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Kingman City Council to order at 5 o'clock PM on May 19th, 2020. And this meeting is electronic. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Here.
Vice Mayor Linginfelter.
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins.
Here.
And Councilmember Wade.
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. This evening, we again have no pastor for the invocations. So again, I'm going to ask us all just to have a moment of silence in reflection or prayer for our city and our country and the world as we move through and out of this pandemic. So let's take a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Now, would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 3843103A to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. And before I begin with item one, I would like to announce that we're going to have a change in the order of the agenda in order to accommodate some consultants who are here this evening, who have a long drive back to their homes after they give this presentation. And so after we have the appointments and before we have the, let me say it this way, before we have the consent agenda, we will listen to the presentation on 7C, which is the solid waste rate study. So that will really be moved quite a bit up in the agenda. So having said that, let's move to appointments. Number one, for the Park Recreation Aquatic and Golf Commission appointments, the Park Commission has two three-year terms that need to be filled. We have one applicant at this time, Alessandra Ali Reynolds. Staff recommends the appointment of Alessandra Ali Reynolds to the Park Commission for this term that ends December 31st, 2022. We have an application in our packet, and I believe that Ali is not online to speak with us. And at this time, we have not received a statement other than that, which is in her application. So I would entertain comments. Who does our park liaison?
That is me, mayor. And if nobody has any questions or comments, I would make a motion that we appoint Ali Reynolds to our Parks and Rec Commission Board.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appoint Ali Reynolds to the Park Recreation Aquatic and Golf Commission. And so all in favor, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. And we thank, we thank Ali Reynolds for applying and for participating with us in this really important commission for our city. The next item of business is a recognition for our graduates. As we know, we have lots of high school graduates this year, and they have really had to do without a formal ceremony. And so we thought it would be nice to recognize them formally with a proclamation. And this is really intended for the high school graduates. Last week, MCC had its graduation, and I was able to create a video on our behalf, as did Mayor Brady and Mayor Sheehy. And so that was all incorporated into their graduation. And so it was fun to be a part of that. And I will also mention that some people have asked that the city do something to kind of celebrate the graduates. And at this time, it's not really viable to promote any kind of gathering, as we know. But maybe in the future, we'll be able to celebrate in a more robust way. But for now, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Kingman High School seniors completing their K-12 education this month have all contributed to making our schools great. And whereas teachers have opened students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams. Whereas the 2020 senior classes in Kingman keep Arizona values alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship and perseverance in a time of uncertainty due to COVID-19. And whereas the senior classes in Kingman will be our listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors of the future. And whereas the City of Kingman community supports and congratulates all the students who will continue to influence us long after this current crisis has ended and school days have become memories. Now therefore, I, Jen Miles, mayor, proclaim this month of May, 2020, to be designated as senior class of 2020 month in the City of Kingman, Arizona, dedicated to all of the students who have worked hard to push forward to a future that will serve themselves, family, community, faith, and futures together. And in doing so, urge all citizens, take time this month to recognize and acknowledge the impact that the senior class of 2020 has made in our lives. And witness there whereof, I have signed my name on this fourth day of May, 2020. So I hope they know how much we appreciate their success and believe in their future, in spite of this as being a unique situation, which we hope will not have to be repeated. But is there, are there any comments that anyone would like to add to that? Hearing none, then we'll move forward to the call to the public. This is a virtual meeting, and so comment, public comments were to be submitted to the clerk's office because our in-person attendance is suspended for this meeting. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, it's held through technological means. Public comments were to have been submitted in writing to the city clerk's office via email or by placing them in a drop box at the city complex or by mailing them. And so I would ask, Ms. Meredith, do we have any comments that were submitted?
We have not received any call to the public comments for this meeting, ma'am.
Okay, then we'll just move forward. And I hope that members of the public are watching the meeting live via our Channel 4 or the YouTube, our YouTube station. So now let's move on to the item which has been moved forward, which is 7C. And that is the solid waste rate study. And since I have no other items to read on that, I'm going to turn it over to Manager Foggan.
Thank you, mayor. Council, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. These meetings continue to be somewhat of a challenge for us. I appreciate your indulgence in putting up with them, the necessary evil of a pandemic. But thank heavens, we have the technology. Appreciate being able to move this agenda item up. This rate study is something that I think we've been talking about since I got here, pretty close. And so we're grateful that we've had great consultants to work with. I want to thank my team that has been working on this as well. And what our plan is, is just to walk you through PowerPoint that we have presented in your packet and have both our team speak to some items as well as the consultants. So with that, I think Tina and Rob are planning on tag teaming this from our team. Also need to mention that Eddie Tapia and Kealan Yarborough have also been a big part of putting this information together. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Tina and Rob.
Thank you. Kevin and Pat, are you on the line?
We're here.
We're here.
Well, I think the first part of the presentation belongs to you. So if you want to jump, jump in, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, are they going to put the presentation up on the screen?
Annie, are you going to do that, screen share? Thank you.
There we go. Okay, good evening, mayor and council, and members of the audience. As City Manager Foggan has indicated, this has been a collaborative effort with city staff. This is not a usual study where you walk in and the consultant just does a study and walks away. This truly has been a collaborative effort by all of us. With me today will be Kevin Burnett, who is with Wildon Financial Services. We're both with Wildon Financial Services, working together. And then Bob Gardner from SCS Engineering. We divided the study up because it's got two parts to it, really. Operational assessment and also a financial plan with rates. So if you go to the next slide, what we'd like to cover is to talk about the program or operational assessment. Also be discussing in more detail the single stream recycling feasibility, the transfer station feasibility. We'll then go into the summary of the proposed revenue increases for the solid waste rates and talk about the financial plan, how it was developed and what's included in it, proposed rate alternatives. And then this is where the staff, Tina and Rob, are going to wrap it up by talking about the benchmarking comparisons and the privatization. Next slide. So as I mentioned, we work with the city team to identify the financial plan options. And we looked at all the ongoing operations and maintenance expenses, vehicle replacement needs to continue to provide the services. And it sounds like two bullet points on a slide presentation, but there's a lot of work that went into that, looking at what your audit was on your expenditures, what your projected expenditures for fiscal year '20 are, and then what your projected expenditures and revenues for '21, and developing that into a financial plan. Once you develop a financial plan, one of the things that the city requested was, well, we really want to look at the cost of service on who is paying for what? How much is residential versus commercial? So they conducted a cost of service analysis and then came back to us. And then we built that into our base financial plan and looked for the alternative rates of services that you're currently providing. And we looked at what services you may or may not want to continue with in the future. Next slide. And so the study evaluation, as I mentioned, was conducted by Bob Gardner, who is with SCS Engineering and really a national expert on solid waste and recycling and that sort of thing. So that's why we teamed up with Bob, and I'll turn it over to Bob now.
Good evening, mayor and council members. It really is a pleasure, and these are definitely interesting times with regards to a presentation remotely. And so we appreciate the opportunity to present the study. We began our work, gosh, it's almost been, it's been a year when we began initiated our work on assessing the city's solid waste collection system. And we presented our first really report in July of 2019. And the rate study continued on, and the city made some decisions along the way. And we subsequently made some additional assessments and made some, submitted another report. The city moved forward, did some additional things, and we've gone to about two or three iterations. And the city has been making adjustments along the way. And so we've tried to update our findings based on the decisions that you've made as you've gone forward. Our, our analysis really focused, if you could go to the next slide, on a number of components. It was a fairly high-level analysis. We looked at your collection systems, looked at the way your system is set up, the type of equipment that you have, how old that equipment is, the routes that you have, the frequency of collection, the overall services you provide. We looked at the recycling side in terms of the costs associated with that, as well as just the processes that you use to recycle. Because when we began this process, you had your various citizens' drop-off areas, and you had your more centralized area that you collected. And then in last year, you made some decisions with regards to recycling and kind of consolidated things. So that was one of the issues that we had to address in some of the modifications that we did. There was also some revenue sufficiency preliminary work that we did. And as Pat mentioned, one of the, one of the recommendations early on we had was that the city should do a study to look at the cost of service. And the city elected that they had the internal resources to do so. And so they really looked hard at the overall cost of residential and commercial waste to make sure that the rates that they're charging cover those costs. We also looked at, one of the questions that was asked is, would it make sense to, or would there be a, really, it makes sense, no pun intended, to build a transfer station? Could you reduce your costs by having a transfer station? Because what a transfer station does is allows you to have more time en route of your collection vehicle versus having to drive to the landfill and back every time you are full. And so we conducted that analysis. Then we were also asked to look at the issue of privatization. Would that provide the city any real value and potential reduction, either improvement in service or reduction in overall cost of services? Next slide, please. So let's kind of take a look at some of our fundamental conclusions that came out of our study. First off, with regards to collections. As I mentioned, we recommended early on that the city perform that cost of service analysis. My understanding is that the results of that will be presented this evening by city staff relative to cost of residential service, cost of commercial service, and the other services provided by the city. We concluded based upon looking at the routes that they have, how much material is being collected, that the city has adequate number of trucks and staff. I think one of the challenges that you have, and it's almost inherent in almost every city we work for, is maintenance is always a big issue relative to the solid waste collection fleet. The city has challenges there as well, finding mechanics, finding people who can provide those services. That's just quite frankly, one of the challenges that you have in running a fleet of trucks. I don't know if any of you have ever had a chance to ride along on a garbage truck, but those vehicles take a beating. You figure every 30 seconds, those arms are coming up, they're going down. And it's a very violent, it's very violent when it does it. So they take a lot of abuse, and so they really do require significant maintenance to keep them running. And so that's why, for example, there, you have a reserve fleet on your vehicle so that when vehicles are down, you can, you can keep on picking up trash. We also concluded that there, we took a look at the overall age of your fleet. And overall, you're okay, but it's moving towards the older age. And there are a couple of older vehicles, both in the residential, commercial, and the bulky waste fleet, that over the next two, three, four years, it's going to be probably advisable for the city to replace some of those older vehicles. And we kind of list some of those in our report. And you all, it looks like you're planning that kind of capital expenditures. And I think Pat and Kevin will talk about that in a moment, relative to making sure that the average age of the fleet stays within industry norms. We also looked at the issue of once-per-week residential pickup. And I know it's a very, well, I work, I'm working right now with two communities that have twice-a-week collection. You all have twice-a-week collection. And from, and there are a number of your communities around you that have transitioned to once-per-week garbage collection services. And they've done so for a couple of reasons. Number one, cost, obviously, if you're running many vehicles twice a week, you're spending more money. And then with that, some of them provide recycling services, which helps to kind of balance, balance that collection load up. So we looked at that in terms of what the impact would be on the vehicles and staffing. And we ultimately concluded that there could be some cost savings associated with once-a-week residential collection. And like I said, many communities around you have done so and done so successfully. And actually, most of the, most of the country is on once-a-week collection. But it's hard, it's hard to transition. Once you have, you know, every, every, twice a week, it's difficult sometimes to transition over to a once-a-week collection. But it's something we recommend that you potentially consider. We looked at various recycling alternatives. At the time we began our study, you had the pilot program going. You, then you had your citizens' disposal area, recycling areas that they could drop off recyclables. And one of the unique things about Kingman is when you collect your recyclables, you've got to ship it a long way. It's like 100, 120 miles to take it to Las Vegas and bring it back. So it's really costly and very difficult to do that. And so the city, we looked at that in terms of whether the alternatives were, whether you should expand your program or not. And we offered some suggestions and no really conclusions there. It's just that it's a costly function, provides a value. And so it really comes down to a value decision, I think, by you relative to whether you are willing to pay the cost associated with recycling or not and the value that that provides the city. So we provide those kind of thoughts in our report. Relative to the transfer station, we fundamentally concluded that, given the proximity of the current landfill to the city, it's like 16 miles, it really would not be cost-effective to construct a transfer station at this juncture. Typically, you're in the, in the 30 to 40 mile per range where you begin to think, okay, I need to, I need to put a transfer station. Because when you start getting those kinds of distances, the amount of off-route time is so significant that you need to begin to add additional equipment and staffing in order to do your routing. But at the distance that the Mojave landfill is at, at this juncture, it really doesn't justify building a transfer station at this, at this point. Next slide, please. Relative to the private, privatization issue that was mentioned, we did some, and the city staff will talk about this a little bit more detail in a moment. But we benchmarked the cities against some of your surrounding communities that are similar demographics, size, and the types of services that are being provided. We looked at the rates that you charge, compare that against your benchmark cities. And, you know, the fundamental conclusion that we came, we came up with is that your rates are pretty reasonable. I mean, you do twice-per-week collection. So you're going to have additional cost compared to a community that does once-per-week collection. And so if you take that into account, and you, let's say, if you subtract that theoretically with that second pickup per week is, you're really, really in line with, with the other communities that have contracted services. So my, our conclusion was fundamentally, the rates that you're charging appear to be reasonable along the way. If fundamentally, if you had concerns, we indicated that you could always go out with RFP or a bid to determine whether savings that you think would actually be achieved, those are always options that you can, can consider. And because collection can be provided, obviously effectively by municipal staff. You've done so for years. And my experience with municipalities is they typically do a very good job. And you all do a very good job. So you should be proud of your staff. They are very dedicated to what they do. And so those resources or that service can be done by both. And really, it would be up to you as to whether you want to go through that process to vet that out. Next slide, please. So like I said, the city rates appear to be reasonable, given that you do two weeks per week, two times per week collection. And that fundamentally, if you decided to go to once a week, you could get some reductions in overall costs. Next slide, please. Pat, turn over to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bob. Next slide. We're going to be talking about the financial planning. And as I mentioned, there was two parts to this, really three parts to study besides the operational assessment. It was the financial plan and the cost of service determine how to allocate costs to the different customer classifications. One thing that I really like to emphasize is that there's a big difference between a revenue increase versus a rate increase. A revenue increase is what you need in order to balance your revenues to cover your expenditures, and it would be across the board. So in other words, this percentage amount, let's say 5%, we need to, and revenue we need to generate in order to cover the cost. A rate increase is the impact on individual customer class, and that's where the cost of service comes into play, and how the additional revenue is recovered. So from whom it's recovered. And you set your rates on whoever has the cost, and you cover that through the rates and bring that in as revenue. But there is a distinction. So in other words, you might have an overall revenue increase of 5%, but somebody might have some, a rate impact of something less than that or more than the 5%. And a revenue increase and a rate increase will not necessarily, like I say, be the same for each customer. Next slide, please. And what do you need additional revenue for in the financial plan? Well, you have, as Bob mentioned, aging fleet. That's something that has to be kept up, or you're ending up paying more in maintenance cost. And that's, again, to meet the operational costs that you have, whether it be through personnel or through equipment and supplies and that sort of thing. And then to meet and maintain targeted reserve levels, because it's always important. And I don't think you can emphasize it any more than COVID-19. Why to have reserves? Because you never know what was going to happen, and you want to have that financial reserves. Next slide. This one is that we're talking about our findings and the cost. The commercial service costs exceed revenues by about 25%. That's one thing we determined. The residential bulk, bulky pickup costs over $250,000 a year to operate. The recycling program costs more than $300,000 a year to operate. And the revenues that are coming in are under $10,000 a year. And then residential customers are subsidizing a majority of these services and programs. So in other words, that, that's how it's being made up is through the, through the residential. Cash reserves are subsidizing a small portion of it, though. Next slide, please. The scenarios evaluated, there is, there's no change, a status quo. Eliminate recycling, keep commercial. Another scenario, eliminate commercial, keep recycling, eliminate commercial and recycling, or once-a-week collection for residential and keep commercial. And so you can see, there's a lot of work to bring these scenarios to you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin Burnett, one of our team members.
All right, thanks, Pat. Next slide, please. So we've got some proposed changes to your existing rates and rate structures based on those different alternatives that Pat just mentioned in the, in the previous slide. So the intent of the changes to the rates and the structure itself is to, going back to the other slide that Pat presented, where it showed that the cost of service isn't exactly lining up with, the costs aren't lining up with the revenues by class at this point in time. So part of the intent of the, of the new rates is to try and realign those so that residential customers are paying for their proportionate share, commercial customers are paying their proportionate share of costs, and so on. And then the other piece of it touching on something that Bob had mentioned earlier, that you, your fleet is getting older over time. We want to make sure, wanted to make sure that we had a plan in place to make sure that those vehicles got replaced in an appropriate timeframe so that it maintained the industry standards in terms of the fleet and making sure that it was running as efficiently as possible. Next slide, please. So here we've got some of the different financial plans. And I think it's important to point out at the outset here, you've got, going down the first column on the left, we've got some different options in terms of what services are being kept, what options are, what services are being eliminated in each of these. And that has an influence on what the financial plan is, both in terms of the revenues and the expenses. So for example, if we were to take away the commercial service, we'd be losing the commercial revenue, and there would be also taking away some of the commercial expenses. At the same time, there are some expenses where we could say this is strictly a commercial-related cost. So the commercial vehicles or maintenance on the commercial trucks, that's obviously something that's specific just to the commercial customer class, so that cost would go away. But at the same time, there's other costs that are shared between residential and commercial and the other services provided, such as some staff time. It's hard to segregate exactly. This staff time is only allocated to commercial service versus residential cost service. So staff did a phenomenal job of going through each line item of the budget and trying to allocate the costs, whether it's strictly residential, strictly commercial, or some shared factor thereof. So that causes some of the bouncing around in the rates that I'm going to allude to here. But I did want to comment on staff's very helpful work on that. So then moving over to the next three columns to the right. Um, so then moving over to the next three columns to the right. So this is where Pat was talking about the difference between a revenue increase versus a rate increase. So the revenue increase is telling us how much more revenue the solid waste utility needs on an annual basis. So um, we've got the no change option. We're looking at a four percent increase in twenty-one fiscal year twenty twenty-one, another four percent in twenty-two, a four percent in twenty-three, and then a five percent increase in in twenty twenty-four. Um, the next line down is eliminate recycling and keep commercial. Um, that's the recommended option based on all of these different options that we looked at. So that would see a two percent increase in fiscal year twenty-one, a three percent in fiscal year twenty-two, a three percent increase in twenty-three, and then a three and a half percent increase in twenty-four. Um, so then you can see the the rate increases for um, the different options going below that to the eliminate commercial, keep recycling, eliminate commercial and recycling, and then reduce the residential service to one times a week and keep commercial. So then if we move into the middle of the table, this is getting into the rate increase. So this is where Pat said there's a difference between um, how much more revenue you need and where we're getting that revenue from in terms of customers. So you'll see under the the recommended option there, the eliminate recycling, keep commercial, we're recommending a two percent increase overall in revenues in fiscal year twenty-one, where what we're proposing to keep the residential rate static at the nineteen seventy-eight that it is today. So there would be no, um, there would be no rate increase to residential customers in fiscal year twenty-one. And then in twenty-two, it would go to three percent, and then the three percent there again um, in twenty-three, twenty-four. And you can see what those rates would be going from nineteen seventy-eight to twenty thirty-seven, um, twenty ninety-eight and twenty-one seventy-two. Um, the further set of columns is the commercial rates. So in sticking with the same recommended scenario, you can see in that first year fiscal year twenty-one, um, the rates for commercial customers would go up by thirty-four point eight percent. So that's reflecting what Pat talked about earlier, where currently commercial customers are not paying their proportionate share based on the costs that have been allocated to that customer class. So we needed to do some restructuring of the rates so that we balance things out and that commercial customers were paying their share, residential customers were paying their share. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so then this is again our our recommended plan, the financial plan, eliminate recycling. Um, so we've got the same information across the top with the revenue increase for the next four years, the residential rate increase, um, the commercial rate increase. We didn't get into the individual um, commercial rates because there's just too many, too many different customer classes within the 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 customer grouping, commercial grouping to to be able to list all their rates. Um, but we also added in the bar graph at the bottom. So the dark blue lines, those are the recommended target reserves that Pat was touching on before, um, that we want to make sure that we we maintain a certain level of reserves every year in case we do have a COVID or other issues come up. And then the lighter blue or turquoise bars, those are what your actual reserves are. So you can see in the early stages, our actual reserves are higher than our target. Um, but by the time we get to fiscal year twenty-eight, we've got a pretty good matching um, between what the target is and what the actual is. And because we've got higher reserves now than than what our target is, um, that has allowed us to do the smaller rate increases over the next few years and kind of ease into things and and get a better feel for uh, what the market's going to do, um, how our costs are going to change. It gives us a little bit of flexibility um, and and not raise rates as rapidly as we otherwise would. Um, next slide, please. Um, so to that extent, this is an option. Again, we're still looking at a recommended option. Um, but in this case, we would forego the rate increase in fiscal year twenty-one and in twenty-two. Um, so you can see the reserves are drawn down on uh, much quicker under this plan. And before, when we had an increase in twenty-one and twenty-two, um, the fiscal year twenty-three increase was three percent. Um, because we're pushing off the rate increases later on, that means the rate increases need to be that much bigger in order for us to play catch up with our um, increasing expenses moving forward. Uh, next slide, please. Um, I touched briefly on the uh, vehicle replacement program as as did uh, Bob and Pat. So uh, this is the plan that the the city staff has put together um, that they're comfortable with to to make sure that they have the vehicles that they need to have. Um, they're not getting too old, they're working efficiently um, to try and minimize or reduce as much as possible. Um, any repairs that need to be uh, need to be done on the vehicles, as as Bob said, the um, the trash vehicles take a beating as they're as they're going around the route. It is a, it is a very violent process to to lift the cans. So um, the city feels that this is a reasonable uh, replacement program that will keep the fleet in in good working order and help to minimize costs um, going forward. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, can we advance the slides? There we go. Thanks. Um, so then this is providing a little bit more information on our um, on our recommended option. So we've got residential customers. So these are the rates that we were showing again on the previous slides. Um, but I did identifies that by far um, the most significant number of customers you have are residential customers where you're at eleven thousand five hundred and eighty-one uh, build containers. Um, we did get into some of the more um, line items for the commercial customers. You can see the number of customers by different uh, bin sizes as well as um, what their increases would be. Um, so again, residential, we're not proposing an increase. So the current rate's nineteen seventy-eight, it would go to nineteen seventy-eight, stay the same in twenty twenty-one. Um, the commercial basic customer service um, is at twelve thirty-six today. It would go up to sixteen sixty-six based on the rates. Um, the residential extra trash at the bottom, um, currently it's fifteen dollars per load. Um, we're proposing that increase to twenty-five dollars per load in twenty twenty-one and then increase by the same percentage uh, rate increase as the residential regular rates going forward. Um, and then the commercial extra trash would be discontinued um, under this program. Um, so with that, we're moving into some benchmarking comparisons um, section, and I will turn it back over to the city um, to walk through their findings there.
Oh, thank you, Kevin. Mayor Council, this is Rob Owen. Uh, we did look at some benchmarking and comparisons with uh, some comparable communities around us. Uh, next slide, please. So again, cost of service uh, depends on diverse factors, geographic location, size of service area, proximity to and ownership of landfills, customer base, and the age of fleet. Next slide, please. So here are some uh, comparable cities. And again, I'll start with the caveats. Uh, this is based upon the best available. Sorry. Um, so these are comparable cities. And um, I'll start with the caveats that they are based on the best available data that we could obtain in that the Bullhead City information is based on a pending contract that's still under negotiation. So again, um, this shows the the average current residential rates range from around fifteen dollars to a little bit over twenty dollars per monthly. Um, it does vary some on curbside recycling. And there are some in here that are once a week. Uh, the proposed contract in Bullhead is a once a week contract. And the uh, in the public contract in Sierra Vista, the public service in Sierra Vista is a once a week. Uh, since we put this information together, I think we've got some new information on Williams that they have since uh, ceased their curbside program and are doing a drop-off recycling program. Now, this slide also contains information on some of the private haulers in our area. Again, these are once a week pickups for solid waste only, and they range from uh, twenty to a little bit over twenty-four dollars. Next slide, please. So privatization. Next slide, please. So there are service provider options. Privatization, obviously, that's a contract with a private uh, third-party uh, provider. Um, there are different ways that can be done. It couldn't, it it can include all the following bullets of collection, disposal, billing and customer service. Uh, billing and customer service generally, you know, are optional. And that would depend on the contract that was enacted and the uh, the terms of that contract. Now, City of Kingman service currently, that's all provided by city forces. Collection, disposal, billing and customer service. Next slide, please. So a little bit closer look at the uh, services uh, in Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City. And again, the caveat on the Bullhead City information that is part of a pending contract that's under negotiation. Um, they contract with Republic Services. The proposed contract term length is three years. It would include one time per week collection with two cans that would be picked up, could be picked up on the same day. Well, there'd be no curbside recycling. There would be drop-off recycling locations that were unmanned. A number of those locations has not been determined yet. And just some other facts, uh, landfill is owned by Mojave County but operated by Republic Services. The proposed monthly rate is around fifteen dollars a month. And that's based upon the services outlined above. In those services, if that level of service were to change, that would probably affect their rates. And there's an annual CPI adjustment built in to that contract. Uh, in Lake Havasu City, uh, again, it's contracted with Republic Service Services. Contract terms for fifteen years and that contract became effective in two thousand seventeen. It includes a one-time per week collection, which is solid waste and recycling on the same day. Um, they have drop-off recycling locations that are unmanned. The landfill is owned by the city and operated by Republic Services. The monthly rate is seventeen dollars and thirty cents with an annual adjustment not to exceed five percent that will kick in until, will kick in after twenty twenty-two. Next slide, please. So just some considerations for privatization. Again, uh, under the privatization scenario, you'd be working with a for-profit provider. You know, probably the most, one of the most important uh, considerations for us would be the displacement of eighteen of our employees. There's the potential for the lack of control or accountability. Um, there are contract terms, um, potential for rigidity of the contract and the possible limiting future options. I think that uh, if a city were to go with a private provider and liquidate all of its uh, solid waste equipment and fleet, that it would be hard pressed to to start that up again in the future as it would take a a huge initial capital investment. Uh, under the City of Kingman uh, provision of solid waste services, again, it's not for profit. Um, customer service, those our solid waste department's been recognized uh, as exceptional customer service providers in both of the last city uh, citizen surveys. Um, it gives you local control and accountability. It allows you to instill those organizational values, you know, in our case, um, you know, safety and safety of the public and the safety of our employees are critical to us. And we're able to instill that by having that um, service in-house. Adaptability, I think that uh, you know, our our department, our division has shown adaptability, especially given with the recycling changes over the last few years. Communication, community outreach and partnerships, we've established strong partnerships in the community. We're a regular presence at uh, at uh, city schools. When there's not a pandemic going on. Um, transparency, and just going through this process with the rate study. You know, um, any of our customers can come in and see what we use to determine what those rates are. And I think that's something that would uh, be different with a private provider. Well, another potential impact would be the county landfill. You know, we're a major uh, vendor, we uh, we spend a lot of money on tipping fees at the landfill. If uh, if they were to go to a private provider, uh, there's no guarantee that they would use the Hoppy County's landfill. And then uh, solid waste is also a contributor through interfund transfers um, to the, to the general fund. And you know, if those solid waste contributions were taken out of the budget, then the other departments and divisions would have to make up that difference, uh, offsetting those costs. So. Next slide, please. So next steps, uh, depending on the council's direction. Um, uh, the next steps would include public outreach meetings. And uh, we'll have to try to figure out how we would do those in the age of a pandemic. Uh, again, adopt a notice of intent, set a public hearing date, hold a public hearing at the council and adopt the new rates. So with that, we can try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Rob. Um, I would ask the council at this time if you have questions or comments for uh, Rob or for our consultants.
Mayor, I do. Dina.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, first off, staff and team, fabulous. You guys did great work on this. And I really always, I don't think you hear enough from us, how much we appreciate what you do on a daily basis. So thank you very much. Um, as far as the city is going at this stage of the game, what is the, I'm I'm gathering that the lean, the thought process is keeping it in the city. Uh, that's kind of what I'm feeling in this whole conversation and the whole thing that we brought out here. Um, Greg, what are you feeling? What are you seeing? What are your thoughts on if we should or shouldn't?
I think, uh, Counselor Nelson, did you mean Rob?
I'm sorry.
Yes, I did.
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Counselor Nelson, um, well, as the Public Works Director, yes, I am leaning towards keeping it in the city. Um, yeah, I'm just real proud. I think our our solid waste department is recognized probably more than any of our other divisions, the exceptional customer service that they provide. I think we made huge strides or huge strides and uh, in in uh, educating our employees, provide great customer service and to do their job as safely as they could. So, um, my my opinion would be to keep it in-house, man.
Okay, that was kind of my, what I was gathering. Tell me why we've not ever raised or we've not, why are we charging commercial? Uh, why are we so low? What what what's the reasoning behind that over all these years?
Failure to do rate studies.
Yeah, that's that's good enough for me. Thank you.
I I would add um, to what Rob said, Counselor, on that. And that the idea of going through the rate study and and having our um, consultants look at what what we're doing uh, operationally compared to what other communities are doing and just trying the best that they can. I I know I've mentioned this several times, that the services are different between every single organization that we look at. And contracts are different, uh, even between, you know, contracts with the waste management or Republic Services setup with one community don't reflect exactly what's happening in another community. But I think one of the goals and one of the things that the council wanted to know, and I think that this study has demonstrated that, is to determine are our rates in line with what's happening in other communities? And I think that you can see from the results of what um, our team has done and and what the our consultant teams have done has demonstrated that we we are in line uh, with with what's happening rate-wise with other communities. I I do need to mention that we continue on the solid waste side to the best scores are going to our solid waste for the customer service and effort that they're making. So I I know that's been mentioned, but I think it's it's worth pointing out again.
Okay, uh, this is Mayor Miles. Um, I would like to ask a question about the one time a week. Uh, because we know we pick up two times and it's clear that we're the exception uh, in our area for that. And is that because we have a legal requirement that the other cities don't because they privatized?
Rob is gonna get that one for you.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, this is Rob. Yes, under the Arizona Administrative Code, it's required the trash be picked up twice a week. That can be, uh, if, if you're doing curbside recycling, that can count as your second pickup of, of the, of the week. There is the possibility to get a waiver from that. Uh, it requires going through the county health department and Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Uh, we've been reaching out for information about that process and really haven't had a whole lot of success getting that back yet. But that, that is something we will continue to follow up with.
Oh, thank you. Now, is that, um, applicable if it's on the same day? Would it still count as the second pickup? If you picked up a recycling bin is on the same day with a?
We understand this. It does, as long as there's two different pickups of different materials, we understand that that's how some of these organizations are getting around that.
Okay, because it did sound like we are kind of the only one that is sticking to two times. And so I can understand if that, if they get credit for two times by picking up one recycle and one regular trash on the same day. That is worth pursuing. The option that is, that is, um, really selected as the first choice here has no recycling and our, I, I am concerned about that. Um, cause I think our community in the long term is, is wants that to become viable. Um, and so before I go on with the questioning now, I'll ask if there are any of the council members that would like to ask questions or have comments.
I have a question.
Go ahead, counselor.
Uh, this would be, I guess, for Rob. I, um, don't see a slide that has information about what, uh, the charges are in other communities for the commercial pickup. Um, that would be really interesting to see since we're talking about a significant raise to our small business customers. So I'm wondering what the fees would look like if they, if that was privatized. And one of the options is to just drop commercial and keep residential only. And so it, it would be good to see what the commercial customers would be paying then for a private service if we no longer picked up commercial.
So actually I can answer that with the fact that it's on commercial. The commercial side is not required by communities to have it picked up like residential is. So the reason you're not seeing commercial rates are that we're the only community that offers city, um, commercial pickup. Your, uh, business has the option to shop around all of the different private sector uh, trash collectors and choose who they want to do business with based on relationship, based on, uh, pricing and whatever other factors they feel are necessary. So that's, that's why you're not seeing commercial pricing for the other communities is really because the businesses have an option to, to have their, their trash picked up by anybody they want that does, provides that service.
Okay, um, that makes sense, except I just would still like to see what the rates are for the different size containers, uh, in those cities. Only because, um, of the, A, the first option to increase commercial rates significantly. So I, and the other to drop commercial and keep residential. Because if we did that, then, um, the business owners would have a more competitive market since they would all be going out to get private pickup. So I'd just like to see what that looks like, maybe only in Bullhead and like Havasu. Are those rates, um, similar to what residential or are they significantly higher? I, I think we have to look at those numbers because what we're proposing here is a big increase to small business. And our small business owners are gonna wanna know that we really dug deep and made sure that we are getting them the best.
Well, I can actually do you one better. The businesses that pick up trash commercially have pricing for Kingman. And so we don't even need to go to Bullhead and Havasu. We could share with you what, um, businesses would be charged by the different commercial haulers just for our own businesses.
Do, do you have that or that'll be a follow-up?
I would think that would be a follow-up or, hold on, someone's working on some information. Just one second. All right, Ms. Tina, who has always got data, is, um, prepared to share what, uh, what those rates look like for our, um, other haulers within the city.
Good evening, Councilwoman. Good evening, Mayor and other council, uh, members. So it was a little bit of a challenge to try to obtain rates from the local providers, so those other private haulers. Um, in trying to do that exact comparison that you're requesting, Councilwoman. And we were able to get some information from Westside and Waste Management. And we used basically our containers, so the city containers located across, um, our different locations as kind of that base. And what we found is that we are very comparable even with the rate increases that will be taking place in several of the instances. So we really only probably have, um, probably less than maybe seven or eight of the different container size rates that we were able to obtain. But we found that in all but one of those cases, we were, um, we were more than comparable. We, we beat the competitors' rates.
Okay, very good. Thanks for saving the day, Tina.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, Council, uh, Councilor Melo Keener.
Yeah, I'm very concerned about those eighteen employees that are gonna be displaced if, if we go to privatization. And I, I do, um, agree with, um, Councilwoman Steely that we, commercial, you know, raising that would, would definitely be the way to go and that was a great question. Um, I'd like to see it stay. That's just my only comment. I think we do public hearings would be great. I'd like to hear what the community has to say about it. I know there's a lot of people that wanna keep the recycling and so I'm interested in what the community has to say. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, my question would be either for Rob or for Manager Foggan. So for, um, between fiscal year twenty-one and fiscal twenty-four, what is the total percent, the total rate increase on residential and commercial? I wanna make sure I got this right.
Rob's working on an answer right now.
Thank you.
Our consultants are, consultants are still on. Maybe they could answer that question for us.
Okay.
Kevin, do you have that information?
So I've got, in, in total, if you add up all the increases, um, well, I did it for through twenty twenty-eight. Excuse me, it would be a twenty-eight percent overall increase. But again, that's the financial planning increase as opposed to, um, the impact on each individual customer. So I will, um, work on that right now.
Thank you. Now, a follow-up question to you, Manager Foggan. In all scenarios, uh, it's the city's intent to get away from owning trucks. It's the city's intent to start getting into a leasing program for trucks. Is that correct?
So the lease program would be the same as what we've been talking about. Uh, it's not the traditional lease that you and I would enter into. It would be the, the same spreading out the, the cash across seven years. And at the end of that seven years, we would actually own the vehicle. Uh, so it's really a cash management piece rather than a turn the, the vehicle around piece.
Okay. You can, um, send that information from the consultant to me later, so he doesn't have to crunch it right now. I think what the end goal is, with where the city is at right now on revenue streams being very limited, that, um, the end goal for our, our customers who we all serve, uh, is the best service at the lowest cost. So I think we have to be able to, um, communicate that to the citizens. Beyond a shadow of a doubt that they're getting the best deal. In, in order to do that, I think that there's a little more vetting that needs to be done. It knows, I mean, we need to look at recycling. I know that there's a lot of citizens in our community that value the recycling. Uh, and we just really wanna, wanna make sure that we're giving the best possible service as a community to the citizens at the best cost. So, um, as long as we have the data to back that up, I think that's really what we're after. So, um, I don't know if that would require an RFP to see what's possible. But, um, I think that's the end goal.
Thank you. Okay, um, just checking to make sure I was not on mute. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, I, I had a question about the reserves because right now, um, we had healthy reserves shown. Now, I think that everyone realizes this is an enterprise fund, operates like a business. Uh, we don't, we don't, um, augment it with general fund dollars. And so it has to carry itself. Uh, I'm encour, I, well, I don't know if encouraged is the right word, but I'm glad that this, that the information was gotten about the commercial rates because when I saw that we, that thirty-plus percent increase, you know, it's rather shocking. But if that brings it up to a level that is still comparable or below what the, uh, area private concerns would do, I, it becomes much more understandable. But I saw that, uh, graph where the, um, the, the reserves come down to a target. Now, what, what is that target based on? And, um, and the utilization of the differential there, that, is that going into the leases or the trucks? Or what is that? How is that being, uh, utilized in those years? And then it won't have to be going further down in the years to come? Does that make sense? It's my question, semi-clear?
I think we got it and I think we would turn to Pat to answer.
Pat, do you wanna answer that or you want me to take that?
Uh, Tina, why don't you take that because you, you know, you've got the policy of the reserves.
So Mayor, in our, we actually have, the council has adopted a fund balance policy or a working capital policy for all of the enterprise funds. And it ranges anywhere from forty-five days of operating reserves to a hundred and eighty days of our operating reserves. And so for our solid waste, uh, fund, the recommended reserves are sixty days. And so that's what that reserve, that's what that target reserve is.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
So the utilization of the excess until we get to that target is being, how is that, is that being factored into the acquisition of the trucks or how is that, or is that just?
But it is going towards capital. That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, any other questions or comments from council?
I had a question.
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you. Um, I, I just kinda wanted to echo what, uh, Vice Mayor Lingianfelter had stated. Um, you know, I think the goal is, you know, to get the best service, um, for the best cost. And I, I might even go a little bit further and say, you know, adequate service for the best cost, especially in light of, you know, the economic, uh, uncertainty that we're kind of facing, you know, at this time. Um, one question I had, I, I believe I could direct this to Bob Gardner. Um, you had mentioned in your analysis or suggested that our rates are reasonable uh, compared to other communities. And, and I was just, um, I was wondering if, um, you were referring to our rates based on the fact that we're doing, uh, collection two times per week? And if that comparison to other communities is other communities that also do two times per week? Or are we still competitive, uh, compared to communities that pick up one time per week? Is, is that a complicated question or is that?
I understand the question and the answer is yes, 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 kind of yes. Uh, when we first looked at it, um, and, and if you, you just put the benchmark rates up and you'd see what the rates were and you go, okay, there are differences. And when we asked the question, why are there differences? And then we looked to find out if, in some cases, they're once a week collection. So there is a natural delta, probably a three to four dollars per household per month uh, for providing that additional service. And so we looked at, to see that, okay, if, if you were to, to take what your current rates are, subtract out that kind of rates, where, where would you be? Would that be comparable? And, uh, and that's what we did. And so that's where we came to the conclusion that the rates that you have for the services that you're providing are reasonable. That makes sense.
Okay, and, um, obviously if we were to somehow, uh, get around some of the red tape and be able to transition to one pickup per week, you know, even if we were to keep, not to privatize it, but to keep it within the city, um, that would obviously be more cost effective to the taxpayer, correct?
Yes.
And, um, would we sort of be?
Uh, Counselor Wade, I just wanna be clear that the, no taxes go towards this service. This is a fee-based service.
Right. I meant, I meant to say the, the residents. I, 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 I apologize. And then so, um, with respect to, uh, cost effectiveness, um, I guess this question would be directed toward city staff. Can you tell me what efforts we have made in attempting to, uh, go the route of picking up trash one time per week, uh, rather than two? And, and if there's anything that we can be doing, um, you know, more to, to kind of push that forward?
So no effort has been made other than to look into getting the exception that Rob talked about in his presentation. So currently we operate a solid waste service that has to pick up twice a week unless we are given the, unless we're given that exception to pick up once a week. And that really is kind of the point of us doing this, um, analysis.
Okay, so we would use this analysis basically if we were to make some kind of petition to reduce it down to, to one pickup per week, correct?
That's correct, although, I mean, part of the public outreach, we've talked about recycling, but it's really, um, based on where people are satisfied with the garbage service is what, you know, what the community would be satisfied with, with going from two to one. As been indicated by several people in this presentation, that when you have a level of service and you reduce that level of service, there is, um, you end up with some folks that are, that will be pretty unhappy. And we better have a solution going forward that, that accomplishes, uh, their needs. Um, because I'll tell ya, it's pretty easy to get spoiled with twice a week pickup.
I will, I made a, I made a presentation last, uh, summer at the Arizona League of Cities. And it, it was a, a packed room of, of folks like yourselves as well as city managers. And it was fascinating to hear the, you're not alone in, in the struggles that you're having with regards to the issue of continuing to provide recycling. People wanna provide recycling, however, they're looking for the, you know, the, looking at the cost and, and with the markets going really down south, in many cases, uh, that has been difficult. And so there have been a, a number of cities that have decided they'd like to not to do so. They don't want to, but they, for fiscal reasons, they, they've made that decision, hoping that they can ultimately at some juncture, provide those services. Uh, but it's an interesting dilemma, uh, given it's a very unique market we're in at this point.
And, uh, I guess, uh, follow-up, I, I apologize if I, I, I watched the presentation and I looked at the slides. Uh, maybe I, uh, missed this one, but, um, if we were to, I mean, based on the fact that my guess is, uh, recycling pickups. recycling pickups would be, obviously, you know, maybe less heavy than regular trash or perhaps some people wouldn't participate in that. Would that offset any cost if we were to reduce the trash pickup from once a week to, or twice a week to once a week plus recycle pickup? So that we can sort of satisfy that other requirement that we pick up twice a week something? Or would the cost not offset?
So that we currently, there's not, as Bob indicated, there's not a market for recycling. And the distance we have to take recycling, which is Vegas, actually would increase dramatically increase the cost of curb, if we were to offer curbside recycling. The cost of our, our service would, would really have to be high.
Okay, yeah, that's, that answers my question, I think. And we did, I guess we did go over that to some degree. So, thank you.
Very happy to answer that. Mayor, as everybody's kind of working behind the scenes to make sure that we're answering all the questions, we actually do have an answer for the Vice Mayor with regards to his question about the increase over time.
Oh, please go ahead, Manager Foggan.
Thank you. Ms. Tina.
Thank you, Kevin, for emailing that information. Vice Mayor, from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '24, the residential rate will increase by 9.8% and the commercial rates will increase by 48%.
Thank you, Tina. That's what I, I was a little off on the residential, so I'm glad I got that. I had almost 50% commercial increase over the next few fiscal years. And did I see the slides correctly where like Havasu Cities increases to their rates every year? Are they capped at 3%? And then I thought that Bullhead Cities, they may have tied it to the CPI or they may have been capped as well.
So Havasu was listed as being capped at 5%. They had just the CIP listed for Bullhead. So whatever, whatever that increase is based on CIP.
Yeah. And the reason I ask is, it goes back to my, my question. Where in my brain, I would think that if we're going to make a decision, we should almost start, you know, five years in the future and kind of work our way back because we want to make sure that once we start down this road, let's say we keep it at the city and we start investing in trucks, then you're, then you're committed to a program that is, I mean, you can't walk away with it. I mean, you're, I mean, you're in it. And so five years from now, are we still going to be able to say that we're providing the best service at the lowest cost compared to other options? That we can't say right now. Because we're, right now, we can say we are providing good cost because twice a week service, we haven't done a rate study for a long time. Our trucks are all at the end of their service life. There's a lot of things that sort of in a, in a bad way played to our favor on the cost part right now. But where would we be in five years compared to all the other options? That's kind of where my question is. And that's what I think we need to be able to demonstrate and communicate to the citizens that not only right now, but in five years, you're still going to be paying the best cost for the best service. Does that make sense?
Yep, it makes sense. And I would, I would just point out that, that question with regards to, you know, what would be the cost, you know, in those contracts that we've talked about both Bullhead and Havasu as an example, the average CIP increase over time works out to about 2.7%. So if you take 2.7% times five, you're over a 10% increase for, for all those communities that have a cost of living index built in. So if that helps you kind of understand where the numbers that Tina just gave you, again, I think it continues to be in line with what we're seeing in the, with the private haulers as well.
Sure. Well, that's kind of where I think the vetting, the additional vetting comes in. Right now, it looks like we're maybe, I don't know, $2.50 to make almost $5 a month extra for residential. So that's not a lot. It's not substantial compared to the private providers down in the other two incorporated cities. But I guess it, I wanted to make sure that we're not going to be at a point five years from now, if it's at all possible, that we're going to be paying as citizens of Kingman far more than what we could be paying for excellent or good service. That's the point. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Staley, go ahead.
I just have one other comment. I wanted to make sure that we talked about the outreach because Rob had mentioned he's concerned with everything going on today about how efficiently we can reach out to the public. But it's so important that this is not a surprise to our citizens. I know that they're really upset about the recycling. There wasn't enough heads up. People were still saving their recycling. And they, they had a lot, and now they just have to throw it in the trash. And that's, that's rough. So I think that I'd like to see a survey go into all the water bills if possible, so we know that it got to everybody. And then a sampling of our commercial customers, maybe so many per week we could reach out to on an individual basis and just talk to them. So they know what's coming and we can fill them out for what they have an appetite for. And it's important. I'm concerned about these 18 jobs as well. I think that people need to know that that's what this comes down to. It's a matter of keeping people employed at the city. It's a matter of you're going to have to pay more. Can you live without recycling? Could you live with one pickup a week? These are huge changes. We need to know how the public feels about this.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. I agree. Any other comments? Okay, Manager Foggan, you want to give us the, this is, this is not an action item for tonight. So would you like to tell us the next steps?
Yeah, actually, as far as next steps, Rob covered them somewhat. But I know that we've talked about the public outreach side. Counselor Staley had just mentioned that information. No, it's one of those things where there's, there is a need to make sure that everybody knows what's happening. So that will be our really, probably the next steps on this. Ms. Tina, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I just wanted to make sure that every, that after the public outreach means that the Municipal Utilities Commission will have to be involved in this process.
Yeah, very good point. Thank you. That was actually not one of the bullet points on the slide. But yes, we would absolutely include the utility, Municipal Utility Commission as part of, of this public outreach as well.
That's great. We will really value their recommendations. Vice Mayor, did, did you want to?
Yeah, just one follow-up question. Curious about the public outreach sessions. So is it the intent to present this study to the citizens of Kingman and then to accept feedback from the citizens of Kingman about what their preferred option would be? Is that the purpose of those?
You guys want to speak to?
Yes, this is Rob. Yeah, I believe that we would be seeking input from the public and trying to let them know the process we went through with the rate study and recommendations we came up with.
Okay. And then at what, at what point will a final decision regarding an option be made?
Time, ones?
Anyone?
Anyone, Guler? So we're just adding up all these things on our fingers. Sorry, just one.
Oh, that's okay.
So the thought process is that we would probably have enough information vetted, enough outreach to be able to take and talk to Muck, Municipal Utilities Commission, sorry, in August.
And that's with a recommendation for an option? One of the options we just saw?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ron, does that give you enough time or are you pushing?
You know, it's a, that's a great question, Counselor Nelson. The, the really, the, the challenge in this is the current pandemic and the out, you know, being able to develop outreach that really was able to get to, to folks. I would say that that's what we would shoot for is, is August. And if we get into July and we haven't reached enough people, then we would just, I would just report that we, you know, we haven't reached enough people and, and we need a little more time for, for outreach. You know, obviously, I know Vice Mayor has mentioned that, the Mayor's mentioned it. Several of the council members, obviously, we want to get, we want to, we get as much feedback as we possibly can. You know, one of the things that we just don't know, and I mentioned this already, is, you know, people are really happy with the service. Are they going to be really upset if we, if they see that it can go, if we go to one time a week pickup? And, you know, the, a large majority of the folks may think that that's a really terrible idea and we need to know it. And if we're not getting enough feedback on that, or we've been unable to contact people, we may need to spend a little more time with that. But we definitely want to know, you know, is, you're seeing the rates in the presentation at night, just under $20 a month, we're picking up your, your, your solid waste twice a week and you can, you know, you can drive to Bullhead and, and get your solid waste picked up once a week for $15. It's, that's a pretty nice, that's a pretty nice benefit for an extra $4. So but yeah, I think we would, we would definitely let you know if we haven't reached enough people.
Okay, I think that that's very important. If we rush our way through it, then the citizens aren't having a real say in that. So I would hate to feel pressured on that.
Any other questions or comments? I will just make a few. Manager Foggan and I have spoken about this previously in that I, I think this is a difficult time to engage the public on any measures that it results in rate increases. I really do. And so I agree that it's not anything to rush through because there are so many families and households right now that don't really want to think about a rate increase when they're trying to, you know, get through the pandemic. So we have to be sensitive to that. And I think what causes me to consider moving forward is only because people are upset about the recycling and, and and so that issue needs to be questioned and, and find out where their point, where their price points lie really with respect to the value of that. So the other thing I would, I would just, I would just ask that it be framed, you know, carefully because people need to understand also the difference between the residential and the commercial. The options for commercial are so different and they already exist. And so just knowing what the comparison might be with what we charge or could charge with this big increase still in line or below what other options are available is really important. So how it's presented is, is important. And one thing we haven't discussed, but I would throw it in the mix, and I don't know the answer, is the, the public services that our, our sanitation department offers that we would, might lose. And I think if there are, that there are services and engagement with community, those should be highlighted too, that those, those are, those, that's part of the reason I think we're really valued as a, that department is really valued, the customer service and the extra, the extra distance that they go to make sure that, that the customers are served. So those are my comments and since there are no, if there are no further comments, I'm going to move on the agenda. And we will expect that you, Manager Foggan, and the staff will move forward in creating some kind of communication package with the public.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let us move then to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. So I would ask, are there any items that a counselor would like to remove from the consent agenda? Giving a minute to unmute if you, if you need to unmute. Okay, hearing no items to be removed from the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. I, items A through H.
Mayor, I will move.
Second.
Counselor Nelson, I think you were the motion. And Vice Mayor, you were the second. And is there, without any further discussion, I would ask for all in favor to say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Eyes have it, motion passes unanimously. Well, we have no old business, so we'll move to new business, which is a discussion of annexation, annexation of the Kingman Airport and Industrial Park Phase Two. Vice Mayor Linganfelter has requested a discussion on annexation of the Kingman Airport and Industrial Park Phase Two to include available long-term funding mechanisms and possible revenue sources. Well, Vice Mayor, would you like to move into a discussion of that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We certainly could. I expect this evening, it'll be pretty brief. The request was to ask staff to go and to explore this topic and bring us back information maybe within 60 days. I think we had a little bit of research that was done maybe three years ago on the topic, but delving a little deeper into this. And the reason I bring this up now has to do with the city's revenue streams. We're already working with the FAA to release the 1,800 acres in Phase Two. And right now, when that land is released, as it's developed, the city will certainly get land sale proceeds to be reinvested back into our Kingman Airport in accordance with the grant assurances on the property, but we won't see a dime otherwise. And I think that there are, as we look to do something new and different and better in Phase One than we have done in Phase Two, we want to make sure we don't miss out on permit fees, review fees, future development fees when those are adopted, one-time construction sales taxes, which also spoken about if, if industrial spec shell buildings are built and leased in Phase Two, and that's going to be reoccurring commercial lease tax revenue to the city every single year. We'll also gain control over our zoning and over our roads. We haven't been very successful in getting counties to support our roads on Phase One. So we, we want to make sure that we don't have to depend on them more than we have to and certainly partner with them when we can. So that's really, all I'd like to say, I look forward to finance and economic development and everybody else that needs to be involved to bring us back information, but look at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Manager Foggan, can you speak to this?
Yeah, I, yeah, I wasn't really prepared to speak to it. Other than, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure that the timeframe is doable, but we would certainly work to, to get that information. One thing that I don't know how much work we would need to do with consultants versus what we could do internally on that. So there's a little bit of unknowns there, but it, it's something that, that if that's what the council wants to do, we're, we're certainly. we're, we're certainly willing to do the work on it.
Thank you. I think this is the starting point for this discussion. And if I understand it correctly, then it would be an analysis of what's possible if that's, if that were city land in terms of, really, revenues versus expenditures. The cost to support that, which, when it has nothing on it, our, our cost to support is, is limited. But as things are developed there, there are costs associated with all of our public safety and other things that go with it. But there are also all of these revenue opportunities that Vice Mayor just mentioned, the impact fees, the construction sales tax, the potential leases. So that would be a very interesting analysis to see from my point of view. So are there other comments or questions from other council members?
Yes, Mayor, I have a few comments. I was glad to see this on the agenda. And, and actually, I'd like to just turn it over to a consultant right away. I think that we need to move forward with this. It doesn't make sense to have city-owned land in Phase Two that is not in the city limits. We need to be able to not only get the revenue that's going, that we know is coming to Phase Two, but we also need to have some control. I don't like the idea that our city land is not under the control of our planning and zoning. It concerns me that we don't have a say should, should a new industry come that maybe is a high water use industry. How do we stop that if it is not within the city limits? We'd have to leave that up to the county and hope that they would protect us. And that, that makes me uncomfortable. So I'd like to have more control over what industries come out there. I'd also like to see the possibility of creating improvement district so that we can do a better job with Phase Two and maybe look at an improved entrance, lighting, streets, sidewalks, all the things that we are lacking in Phase One. And the only way to do that would be to have some kind of an improvement district, which we cannot do if it isn't in the city limits. So our hands are really tied when this property sits outside of the city. And I think that it's a really good compromise right now to only look at annexing Phase Two so that we're not hurting NAC Fed, we're not, we're not looking at all of a sudden having cover that area with police and fire. We're just right now talking about bare land, going through the steps. And then as that gets developed, which, you know, what, what I hear from Bennett Bratley is, there's a lot of interest right now in that, in that opening, and it's right around the corner. So I'd like to see this go to a consultant now so that we can jump on it and that we don't see anything happening at the airport or at the industrial park that's outside of our control.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Is that a motion?
It could be, I mean, if we can, if, depending on if we're ready to do that.
I don't know, I'll call for more discussion. And, and so are there other comments or discussion on this issue from the council?
I just had a quick comment.
Go ahead, Counselor White.
So I just, I'm sure that an annexation analysis would include long-term financial effects. When I saw this on the agenda, I was excited to see it on there, but I also think it appeared that 60 days may have been sort of an aggressive timeline. And I wanted to, I mean, Manager Foggan kind of addressed that. It sounds like maybe it is. I'd hope, hopefully that if, you know, when a something is proposed, that we consider the, the city's input on how long they anticipate that an analysis might take. Ron, do you have sort of a, any kind of, you know, a better estimate as to how long it would take to do a proper analysis? Sort of put it out for someone to consider or a firm to consider?
Well, Mayor, Counselor White, so if, if we were to take Counselor Staley's recommendation, it would definitely be longer than 60 days. And identifying a consultant and giving that, you know, making sure that they have the time in which to even start this, a project like this would definitely be a need for, for a longer period of time. A guess would be four, four months, I would guess. I mean, that's, that's a, you know, that's a really rough guess based on kind of what we're seeing from other consultants and where they are, so.
And do you have an estimation as to how long it would take the city to sort of do its own analysis if we were to consider hearing a presentation by the city prior to hiring a consultant? Obviously, hiring a consultant would cost money. If, if we could kind of flesh this out with the staff that we have, or at least most of the issues, and then maybe discuss, you know, the cost of a consultant and what they could bring to the table might, might be a viable option. Do you know how long the city would need to take if the city were to do sort of an initial analysis?
Well, I would say that there's going to be a lot of asterisks at the bottom of the analysis because there's going to be, I would say, quite a bit of guesswork involved. We, if, if we were given the need to, to have some base analysis before we used a consultant, you know, again, I don't know what we can do in 60 days. Obviously, we have people that are tasked with a lot of assignments. We're still, as, as example, we're still wrapping up budget items. And so, you know, my guess would be we would need all 60 days, if not 90 days to do, at least to get you back something where you could make a decision on using a consultant. I would point out that we currently do not have any money budgeted for a consultant and don't, do not know kind of how much this work would actually cost.
And obviously, you know, an annexation plan would be pretty permanent. I liked Jamie, or Councilmember Scott Staley's recommendation regarding an improvement district. Would that be included in the analysis? Like how difficult it would be to start an improvement district in that area? Obviously, the cost of fire, police, you know, all the, all the city services to that area over time would be pretty expensive and, and would not justify, you know, just a few, you know, I guess pennies on the dollar when it comes to just, you know, fees for construction and all that stuff. But obviously, an improvement district would make a huge, huge difference in the long term. Would that be included in the city's analysis if we were to have the city take a look at that?
Yeah, a base, a base analysis. I mean, we can tell you if it can be done, you know, does that property need to be in the city to do that? Can we do it because we're the landowner? I mean, these are all options, you know, just that one item could break down into, to multiple looks and, and what, what can be done. You know, when we start dealing with companies, industries that want to come in, you know, the question becomes, you know, with dealing with some of them are, you know, they want deals, do they, you know, do they want to waive being in a, in some kind of improvement district? You know, will they, do they still want to be here? I mean, there's, there's a whole bunch of options as, as part of that. But yeah, I think, you know, we, we would definitely look at the, the revenue options and the expenditure options. At least, I, I would say that we could do that at a, at a 20, 20,000-foot level, at least.
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor?
I would like to clarify, the reason why I would suggest just going straight to hiring a firm is because we would need to have them help us through the entire annexation process anyway. So it would be a, a benefit to, to go with a consultant now and have them get started, even if it's four months. We're talking about three months for the city to give us the analysis. And then we could stick with that same firm to help us through the annexation process should we go forward because it's very complicated. We know that staff's shorthanded this for the next year. So why lump all this extra onto them? Let's just have somebody else coming in do it. And they can compare what other cities have done, what they've seen in revenue. We know there's going to be retail in the industrial park at the entrance. You know, there will probably be hotels and truck stops. So there will be those kind of revenues that we also need to look at to see what are those earned in other areas. So it's quite complex. I think we should just move forward and, and have somebody do that for us.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Any other comments?
Just a quick question of staff. Do we have maybe, I mean, obviously, we can't know with any degree of certainty, but do we have an estimated cost as to how much, you know, it costs the city to hire a firm to do this analysis?
I have no idea, honestly. Ms. Tina, do you have a guess? So I will just tell you that our, the, the master plans, the Parks Master Plan, that these, these studies have been running 50,000 plus. This kind of analysis, maybe not that high. It really depends on how in-depth you want this to be. And I'm certainly willing to look into it.
And, and just for clarification, it's difficult for me to consider writing a sort of a blank check. So I imagine that hopefully when something is proposed, we consider the ability to, you know, I guess, revote on this issue once we find out what the ultimate cost could be. Obviously, it'd be one thing if it was less than 50,000, as you suggest it could be. And, you know, as opposed to if it were several million or something to that effect, which obviously is an overestimation. But, you know, just to, so we can kind of have some kind of, you know, understanding as to how much this is going to cost.
Manager Foggan? Are you through for Counselor White?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Of course, I'm sitting here and all of the reasons that Counselor Staley gave were very compelling to me. And as is the fact that we are in the budget process. This is one of those things that if we make decisions, we are, we have a, we have Phase Two. It's so well underway with the master plan being completed with working with the FAA to open it, the work that is going on on opening up the whole area through the Rancho project. So a lot of pieces are really dynamically moving right now. And I think once some of those pieces are completed, the opportunity is going to be very, very robust for industries to look at us and to, to want to be there. Which is why I hesitate to wait until next fiscal year to budget for a project like this. Because if we really believe the potential for the real, for not only fiscally improving the city, but, but for the things that were mentioned, such as zoning and being able to have more control over who's in there and how it is, how it is built. I like the, I like the improvement district idea. We did it for Kimon Crossing. It really lets you set parameters for how it will look, what the requirements are to get in there. But I feel like we, we do need to move. And so we, we still have a little time before the final budget approval. Is there any way, Manager Foggan, for us to have some kind of feel for what a project like this would cost quickly, like in the next few weeks?
I can give you an estimate in a few weeks. I can't tell you what the ultimate request for a proposal would look like, but we could give you a ballpark.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I know that specificity would not be required in, in a sense. But for a budgeting process, if we had a, an understanding of what might, what it might take, then that would help us make the decision, I think.
Okay.
Mayor Miles? If I may, if I may follow up. If you read the item that I placed on the agenda, the original intent from the 50,000-foot level is that we want to do better in Phase Two than we have done in Phase One. And it listed, you know, just take a order of magnitude estimate on what, you know, permit fees we can get, maybe review fees, future development fees, all these things. Look at special districts, that was also mentioned in the item, to make sure that you look under all of the special districts to see if there's any districts that we could overlap on the property to help offset the cost of, of services. But if it's not, if it's not in the city limits, something else that concerns me, and one of the reasons I put this on the agenda is I know that the city is going to be going out for a local funding solution for roads and maybe for general funded capital, which includes roads, but with no revenue stream for infrastructure, even when the land is released in Phase Two, how are you going to pay for infrastructure on that property? You don't have any money to invest into roads. You don't have any money to invest in anything. And if it's not in the city limits, it's unclear to me how you can request those things. You're certainly not going to get development fees or, and all those things. So you don't want to put all your eggs into one basket. God forbid that sales tax thing doesn't pass in two years. You got to have additional revenue streams. And I can't think of any other place in the city at Kingman that has more future opportunity for growth, for expansion and for revenue than Phase Two. So when I put it on, we have a lot of smart people that work at the city. So I guess my question to you, Ron, is what portions of this do you think that we would even need to contract with a consultant? Because my view on consulting is you only use consultants to do the things that you don't have the talent on your bench to do in-house. So do we even need an attorney, or a consultant? We've got our city attorney that can look at improvement districts with us. We have our economic development staff, we have Tina in finance. We've got all these really smart people in these disciplines that can contribute. What portions of this are you envisioning that we would need a consultant for? I mean, some of our people have been through an annexation in the past, I assume. I know we haven't had one in many years, but could you answer that for me?
I wasn't the one that suggested the consultant.
No, I know you weren't. I'm just asking, in your view as our manager, are there any portions of this that would actually even require us to use a consultant? Because we don't have the talent already on our bench in-house.
I think we can do some analysis. We can make assumptions. It's, there are people, Counselor Staley is absolutely right. There are people that specialize in this kind of work. Yes, we have, we have very smart people. We're doing a whole bunch of things. I don't think that we can do it in 60 days.
60 days doesn't bother me. What I think really matters the most when you look at this is that we would have it annexed in around the same time as the 1,800 acres is released, as it becomes available commercially. So you're not losing out any, out any revenue opportunities.
Yeah, and that, and that looks like it'll be mid next year, right? So, I mean, if, if, you know, if what you're asking for is that if we could have 90 days to start looking at some of the numbers, bring the team together and talk about this and make assignments, and then report back on how we're doing, I think that, that's really, I think, doable. And if the council is comfortable with, in 90 days, some of the things we have to show you. In ninety days, some of the things we have to show you, I guess you could make the decision to, to go with a consultant. Like I said, if it's based on when the land is actually goes through and is released by the FAA, that's, that's twenty twenty-one. And uh, we, we definitely have time to look at it.
Right. This is the time when this research needs to be done now. So we, so we know exactly how we're going to try to fund the infrastructure. We know exactly how we're going to try to fund the roadways. Um, it doesn't make any sense in my mind just to wait for the land release and then sit back and wait to see what happens and not do any planning. So that's kind of why I put this on, to make sure that we, you do this now.
So I, I mean, as far as building roads and in, and that kind of thing, obviously. Um, we'll be happy to look at that. I would answer that question by saying that, um, because the. These properties will be developed through development agreements. Uh, more than likely, infrastructure agreements will be worked out with the companies and the airport. Of course, ha, when they sell their property, have the ability to invest in that infrastructure on that property. So I, I will, you know, I mean, I can, you know, I'm cheating ahead of the analysis, but if there is money. Uh, or if we're selling the property, we are generating money to put in roads, as an example.
As long as it's identified in the airport master plan, correct? Right. Great, thanks.
Okay, so um, what I'm hearing then, Manager Foggan, is that you do, your staff can take this on. I thought, I really thought that they were uh, pretty well extended, overextended. But if they can take it on uh, in ninety days, then I can come back to council with. A uh, an analysis that has a lot of uh, assumptions. I think that, uh, that might give us the information on whether to hire a consultant or not. So, but my question becomes, Kim, how do we hire that consultant if there's nothing in the budget?
We have professional services where we would, we would have to um, draw from and maybe consider not doing other things.
Okay, okay, uh, Counselor Staley, does that address some of your concerns?
Yeah, it does. Um, but I just want to clarify, can staff do the entire annexation process in-house? Because I, I was always under the impression that, that you needed to hire somebody and have them get you to the end.
The annexation portion would be, we would find someone to help us with that. But the analysis getting there, uh, when, if it was clear that that's where we wanted it to be at the end. Uh, that, that work, identifying someone to help us is. I, I, I'm not going to say is easy, but is, is pretty simple.
Okay, thank you.
Does this require a motion or just uh, does the staff have adequate direction to move forward?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest a motion.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to uh, to address the analysis. Of phase two for annexation purposes.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to investigate this issue and. Bring back an analysis to council.
Uh, is, okay, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. I will open the floor for, to, to uh, have staff perform an analysis on the annexation of phase two. Uh, is there any further discussion? And I, I would like to ask as a timeframe on that. An idea that we would like to have, so like ninety days?
So I want to just make sure that I'm clear, that I was clear on that. The ninety days was basically an effort to get the information. But if we run into uh, any levels, staff levels where we get caught up. In any, I would appreciate the opportunity to have that discussion be, before the ninety days.
Manager Foggan, uh, my motion specifically did not contain a timeframe for that purpose.
I appreciate, I got that. I thank you.
Okay, now mine was a question as to whether that was wanting, whether you wanted to include that.
Uh, was that for me, Mayor Miles?
Yeah.
Listening to uh, Manager Foggan's concerns, I specifically did not include a timeframe. Uh, I know that he'll bring it to us in a timely manner. Uh, but certainly didn't want to put an arbitrary timeframe that would make him rush or make his staff rush.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments or discussion regarding this motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to have staff uh, develop and bring back to council. An analysis regarding the annexation of phase two. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to department reports and our first report tonight, or actually our second, is on the golf course update. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this actually was um, a kind of a two or threefold report. Uh, the Vice Mayor had requested a conversation about um, providing. Golf um, to high school golf teams uh, year round. Uh, at no cost. And then I've had several uh, questions from other counselors about the golf course. How, how we're doing. And so what, in conversations with Mike. What we wanted to do is really give you a, a report. We have been running the golf course for a while now, uh, I think with some great success. And so what I've asked Mike to do is build, is build a, a report. That covers some of the golf course operations. Uh, as well as uh, kind of what our relationships, what our relationship is with. Um, the, the high school golf teams and uh, what. Um, and directly to answer uh, Vice Mayor's question about uh, what about offering. Uh, year round of golf to the golf teams from the three high schools. So I've asked Mike, he's prepared a presentation, so I, he, I think is ready to walk you through that.
Thank you, Mr. Musman.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Counselor. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
Okay, and I think my PowerPoint is up on the, is it visible for you?
No, it's not showing.
Not. Okay. Well, let me see here, and I'm trying to share it.
Do you want Annie to share it and then you can just ask her to walk through it?
I think, let's see here, is it there now?
Uh, yeah, now just go into the, the slideshow.
Okay. So there it is. Uh, thank you again for uh, entertaining the golf course. First of all, I'm going to start out with a big thank you to our golf course team. Uh, we had a very busy April. Um, and prior to that, the golf course revenue was increasing over the spring and winter, early winter. Um, in March, we were gearing up for a busy uh, season and shorthanded. Adding part, trying to add part-time members for our staff and uh, COVID nineteen hit. And uh, it was very much of a challenge for us, even with the virus, the um, play, we didn't see a decrease in play. We, we're seeing slight increases. The governor uh, considered golf to be essential. He even said, go play golf, which we love to hear that. Um, March twenty-first, our grill went, we went to, to go only. And we limited customers. We put X's on the floor and limited the number of customers that could be in the facility. Uh, we enforced our, we reinforced our already strict cleaning policies and procedures, sanitizing. We were sanitizing everything. Uh, we came up with several safety precautions and procedures. And implemented them with customers and to, to keep the customers and team members are safe. Team members were encouraged to wear face masks. They did a good job with that. Uh, we've installed Plex glass for the kid, for their safety. Uh, team members promoted social distancing very heavily and practiced it very heavily. When we'd see people out on the, by the putting green, getting too close together, the staff would get on the PA and say, please, social distance. And they did a good job with that. We allowed people to take golf carts, individual golf carts without any additional um, fees. And like I said, we, we had a very, very busy month. E- every day was like our busiest weekend day, so. Um, and then continuing on into May, our, our May revenues are up fifteen percent as well. So um, like I said, hats off to the team there for doing such a great job. Uh, Greg and his staff and Patrick and his staff did a great job. We, we had three recreation coordinators come over and help us out at the golf course because we didn't have enough staff hired yet. Um, we had very many positive comments from the people that came to play our golf course from the layout of the golf course. A lot of them haven't seen our golf course before and they were very complimentary about the layout, the conditions and the, our customer service that they received. In the works, Greg's working on some uh, National Collegiate Golf Association is looking at having a two-day event in October. With seventy players playing two days, which is neat. Um, New Core rescheduled their golf event until October. Greg has been working on a Mojave County Amateur Championship Tournament, which we'd like to get that done. And it'd be just kind of exciting to have people come from all around the county to play here. We've been evaluating the junior program, how we can get that done this year with the social distancing challenges. And we've got that pretty well dialed in. We've been reaching out to the event sponsors and asking them to consider. Um, possibly having tee times instead of shotgun starts to help uh, with the social distancing. We started a new project. This project had been in the work for a really long time. We've been talking about it and, and we've decided to go ahead and do it. While the restaurant was closed. We expanded the grill area and, and decreased the size of the pro shop a little bit. And, and what it's done, it's given us two hundred and fifty additional square feet of grill space for dining. And that's going to be a big help to us with the social distancing that we're trying to do in the grill area. And we did this project in-house. They, they've got a lot of this work finished up even today. So um, this is a new picture that wasn't in the presentation that I sent you. So this is an updated picture even, which like I said, it's turning out really nice and we're happy with it and the crew did a great job. The golf course maintenance challenges, um, we lost our inmate work crew, which is really hit, hit us hard. Being down three other employees, basically. Just, we were disinfecting every touch point on the golf course every two hours, which is challenging. All these uh, safety items that we are listing have really added to the workload to our employees as well. So we've, we put sanitizer applicators up at the grill, over the pro shop area. So customers, if they're not comfortable, they can even sanitize their own carts if they're not comfortable that, which I, I'm, I'm a real safety fanatic. About this COVID stuff, so I like to clean mine as I go. So we've done that for our customers so they can do it. We put the putting green cups in upside down so the ball doesn't go in the hole. Uh, we put pool noodles on so the ball doesn't go all the way down the hole and you can just reach out and touch it. You don't have to touch the flag. So nobody has to touch anybody else's equipment. Um, then I want to talk about junior golf. Obviously, junior golf is very important to us. It's the future of the game of golf. Uh, it's huge to me. I mean, uh, I, I've been in golf my whole life, basically. And my kids have played junior golf. My grandkids play golf. And nothing I enjoy more than playing golf with my kids and my grandkids. So uh, that's just very important to me. And we're always looking for ways to encourage youth to play golf. Um, our, our rates are very affordable. Um, we have an awesome junior golf program. Our rates are seven dollars for nine holes, um, nine dollars for eighteen holes. Our annual pass is four hundred and forty dollars, which if you play forty-eight rounds, you've paid for your annual pass. The summer junior pass is two hundred and twenty dollars. And if you play twenty-four rounds, you've paid for your uh, summer pass. So our rates are very affordable when you look at other golf courses and I've got that later, for you to look at in later slide. We do a lot of offerings for junior golf. Like I said, the, the summer camp, we're, this year, we're going to have to. For, to keep social distancing, we're going to have to uh, have a few less kids, it looks like. But uh, we're going to do our best to accommodate everybody. And we've decreased the fee this year from uh, sixty to fifty dollars. And forty dollars for each additional child. Um, when, when we have our junior, junior um, camp, there's four tournaments that come with that. With the summer camp to get to play. And there's also a season-ending uh, adult junior program, adult junior tournament. We have a lot of people that donate clubs and balls and the proceeds from the sales of that go to keep the junior camp more affordable for the juniors. It helps get prizes for the camp. And our men's club donated two hundred dollars last season. Uh, toward the junior camp. Individual junior lessons we do and they're discounted rates by Haley Bradley, our assistant pro and Greg. They do a great job with the kids and uh, did, that last year, our recreation summer camp. We took, took kids to the golf course a couple of times and let them hit balls and get familiar with golf a little bit. We've also had homeschool children visit our golf course and tour our facilities and do a little clinic for them. Um, we have specials where juniors play after three o'clock with a, a paid adult. To get to the high school golf, basically, we have three schools. Uh, Lee, Lee Williams and Kingman High School both have a boys and girls golf team and they play in the fall. It averages thirty-two players. Kingman Academy of Learning has uh, one. Pro ed team and they play in the spring. Their spring season was canceled this year due to the COVID nineteen. They average about twelve players. And what we do for uh, golf teams is uh, practice and matches for complimentary green fees. And range balls are provided by us. And this is included for the visiting team for matches. We have uh, with high school rounds and practice, we estimate that there's fourteen hundred rounds annually. Most are nine hole, most of them are nine hole rounds. We don't specify to the coaches. Whether their team should play nine holes or two holes, three holes. And some of their players that are uh. Higher handicap golfers, basically, they might only play two holes. Some of them will play three holes. And, but the top five to six players on a team usually play nine holes, rounds every day in practice. And we talked about this as a value, the value of uh, it's about ten thousand dollar value to all three. Schools combined. And what, how we come up with that value basically is the. These aren't hard costs, basically. They're the, like golf courses there, so um, it's not a hard cost. But uh, the, the range balls are, we have to send people out to pick up all the balls that are hit. And the golf carts that the coaches use are um, basically hard cost to us. But everything else is uh, it, the, the golf course is there, so. And other than the seasonal tournaments and the invitational, which are eighteen hole events. The high school golf really doesn't displace revenue based tee times at our facility. Cause they play later in the day for their practice and matches. Like I said, our, our rates are very affordable, but these are calculated into this value of ten thousand dollars. The range balls, the kids hit range balls, we estimate about two baskets of balls, two small baskets of balls. Per trip player per week, which ends up being about three thousand dollars worth of range activity that they get for free. And as I said, the greens fees for the visiting team and the range balls for the visiting teams that come to our facility are included. Um, the carts that coaches use to. The carts that coaches use to monitor their players and that's included. I mentioned that there's four teams and Lee Williams has boys and girls that are on the course at the same time in the spring, I mean, in the fall, and Kingman Academy of Learning, they're in the spring. Each school is on the course daily, basically, but they, they don't all play nine holes every day. Like I said, we don't direct the coaches what to do. So they'll decide which players they want to play nine holes, which they want to play three or four holes. The, the number, the numbers provided in this are basically from the 2019 season, as I said, because the Lee Williams or the Kingman Academy of Learning season was canceled. So with these numbers that we've included in this were from the 2019 season. The school charges, the Kingman Academy of Learning is the only one that charged their students. And I've been told that this, they're doing away with this now. They charge their students $300 to play golf and I think other sports as well. But that was basically for the travel because travel is very expensive for them. And they didn't do it so they could make golf more affordable for that people. Indirectly, it does help make their golf more affordable for their students. And to look at what other municipal golf courses do, the city of Phoenix has six golf courses during the season. The schools have to pay $30 per player and they don't have any discounts for their high school players in the off season. The city of Tucson, during the season, each school pays $200 per team. They don't have any annual or monthly season passes for their juniors. Their junior rates are $3 for nine holes and $5 for 18 holes, very affordable too. But they cannot, they're not allowed to book tee times. They can only come out and play the day of. And they have to play when space is available. They don't have any discounts for their students in the off season either. The city of Snowflake, a lot similar to us, during the season, they have free greens fees and but they don't have any discounts for their high school players in the off season either. I've never seen a golf course that does have free golf for, for the high school players in the off season. There may be one somewhere, but I'm not aware of it. Marketing efforts that we've done, done a lot of really good stuff trying to get people out there. Greg and his team have done a really good job of this. They tried, they tried to clinic free lessons for ladies. This year, we're looking at doing a free monthly clinic for kids, try to get kids to come out and just get the feel for golf a little bit and try it. We've done military appreciation days, education appreciation days for teachers and students. We have midday rate specials, lunch and loop, we tried, Mother's Day, mothers play free on Mother's Day, daily lunch specials, lesson programs. As I mentioned earlier, our summer junior program, which is second to none, really, we've had a great junior program over the years and it still is very, very good. We've, what else we've done? We've taken our punch cards that were formerly for golf only and we now utilize them, make them utilize them for range balls, cart fees, green fees. And we have airification specials, gift cards, golf now, we've switched to where people can reserve tee times and book them on golf now. And so if somebody is searching the internet, golf in our area, our golf course comes up, which is very important. Facebook, we've done programs to try to increase our followers and done a good job with that. We share everything on the city's Facebook pages and on our parks Facebook page. The, we have a very good golf calendar that we keep to keep track of everything. We've updated our brochure. We have sign holders on our fleet carts now, which we have the golf course rules on there. We can promote lunch specials and other promotions. At the city expo last year, we had our golf people there and we have, our annual passes are really a promotion. We have disc golf this year, which we implemented, which is another good one. We also have a new logo, updated logo, basically, and everything we have, a lot of the merchandise we have has the Route 66 Kingman logo on it too, which is very important to me. I think whenever we have Route 66, I think it's important that it says the city of Kingman on it. Basically, I have some concerns about implementing free golf for the high school golfers all year. Basically, some of the concerns would be tracking to see who's on the golf team. That would be a challenge for our staff. Another concern I have, I think it's a very concerning precedent-setting idea, basically. And why I say that is should our tennis kids and our swimming kids, baseball, softball, football, soccer, should they be able to use our facilities for free as well? Because if you're going to do it for golf to me, then they all should be able to use our facilities for free as well. And that's a little bit conflicting with, that we're always, we've been told, but that we should be looking for revenue generating opportunities. And this is like taking it a little bit the other way, I think. And then you have to ask yourself, should cost recovery at the golf course ever be considered? Because I mean, we strive to get the golf course to be as close to break even as we can and we work hard at that. So those are some of the concerns that I have. So with that, I'd just like to say thank you again for, it's been a very, very challenging time at the golf course. And I really do appreciate the job that our team has done. So with that, that's my PowerPoint.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Mayor, back to you.
Sorry, I was muted by the host. I just figured that out. Thank you, Mr. Mearsman, and thank you to the team. That was, I know it's been really challenging during this time to keep that golf course safe and open and we all appreciate it. That was a nice presentation. I would ask for comments or questions from the council.
Madam Mayor, this is Vice Mayor Lincoln. I would like to have, I have some questions for, for Mike, if he's still here.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, first off, the golf course has been running in the red for many, many years. So I would say if the high school kids are going to break the golf course, God help us. I don't think that the high school kids are going to break the golf course. But I did have some questions about the presentation. My first question would be, I'm not sure who put the information together, but did you talk to the high school golf coaches, B J Metasik for Kingman Academy of Learning, Chad Badinger from Kingman High School, and then also Lee Williams High School coach?
I didn't talk to them for this presentation because we keep the information. So I didn't really have any reason to reach out to them because we know what they do. So.
I talked to them specifically about this presentation because I wanted to make sure that all the numbers were accurate and reflected what they believed to be true. And I'd like to share some information with you if I could, specifically on slide 14. So you talked to B J Metasik with Kingman Academy of Learning. He'll tell you that right now, he's got nine to 10 kids on his Kingman Academy of Learning golf team. It's a coed team, boys and girls. They obviously didn't get to play. They play in the spring. They were shut down. If you talk to Chad Badinger with Kingman High School, right now, he's only got six to seven boys on his high school boys team. And they're having trouble with getting girls to play. The highest, the highest number count for, for players is Lee Williams. Lee Williams, they're a lot more into the athletics. And so I think they have about 15 or 16 players on their current team. And Lee Williams and Kingman High School, they play in the fall, as you stated. B J Metasik said that his kids, their season is two months. Chad Badinger's Kingman High School team, his season, their, their season is also two months. Their season is August 28th to October 28th, about two months. Kingman Academy of Learning, for their total two-month season, B J said they play maybe 150 rounds of golf. Chad Badinger says similar, that his kids, you know, played about 150. And then if you assume Lee Williams is saying it's like 450 rounds of golf annually for all the high school teams. So I don't know how you guys got to 1,400 rounds of golf. I'd like to have that explained to me in more detail. What else? And then also the tournaments and the matches, this also has an impact on the number of, of rounds you showed. During the tournaments, it's not the whole team that plays. It's the top five players. I think you may have stated that, where only the top five players are allowed to play during the tournaments and the matches. Kingman Unified's schedule this last year, they had, I think, four matches or tournaments at our course and the rest of the time they were on the road. And I think the girls team had maybe two matches here and the rest of the time they were on the road. Most of the practices, they told me all teams are, you know, they're, they're doing putting green, driving range, or they're doing short-range gold, short-range drills, mid-range and long-range drills. And then maybe after the practice, they're able to play a couple of holes of golf after the practice. Most of the people said maybe it was like holes one and nine, they wanted to stay in and play. As you stated, the 300 fee was sports-wide at Kingman Academy of Learning. It was to cover transportation. They're getting rid of that for all sports. So I guess I'd like to know how you guys got on slide 14 to the 1,400 rounds of golf number. I don't understand that. If, if each one of the, the team's coaches is telling me that they're playing during their two-month season, 150 rounds each, that's all schools together, it's under 500 rounds of golf. So I don't understand how you got to the 14.
Well, our top keeps track of those numbers and what they came up with was different than those numbers. So, and also the numbers when the visiting teams come, they have to play two, those rounds are calculated in there. And also the, when you said only five play, that's not totally accurate either. Five play in the match. And then they usually have six or seven other kids that play that, which we, where I came from, they called it JV. But they don't call it JV here, but they're the other players that are trying to make the team. They play on the match days as well. So the, the numbers that you're quoting aren't totally accurate either. So.
Well, I got my numbers from the coaches and, and I do know how golf works. My daughter's been golfing. She was actually in the junior program here for her whole childhood. And she's actually ranked 18th in the state of Colorado right now. She's gone to the state tournament there three years. She would have went this year again, but it was canceled. So the original request was the only way to get better at golf is to allow these kids to go out and to, and to practice and play. And so the intent was to partner with the city. That they would have to be on an official roster. It wouldn't be for a parent. It wouldn't be for a friend. It would be for them. They would be on an official roster at the course. So they can go out and they could practice and practice and practice and get as good as they could. I thought that was, looked really good for the city to partner like that with them. Maybe do it for tennis too, you know? The other thing that I asked, my request that didn't make into the presentation was considering the golf pro doing like a monthly golf clinic on certain skills, not just for ladies or a certain group, but for everybody, opening up to the city of Kingman. Doing a golf clinic once a month. So anybody that wants to in the community can go out, they can practice chipping or cutting or hitting out of a sand trap, just to promote the game of golf, to promote usage of our facility. And like you said, going back to the kids, they're our future. They're golf's future, right? So I don't see it as a financial burden to the city to say, you know what? If you guys are on an official roster and you want to go out and you want to have that initiative to go out and practice, you know, a lot of their families don't have a whole lot of extra money. I know one of them is a police officer here. Their family's a police officer. And they don't have a whole lot of extra money for golfing as much as he would like. That's why I brought it up. I thought it was a good idea and, you know, the only caveat would be is if they get so good that they bring back the state championship or something, they have to give you a penance to put in your clubhouse, right? That's fair.
Awesome. I, I'm like you. My kids played high school golf. They're two-time state champions. One of them was and the other one was a state champion as well. So I'm very familiar with high school golf. And as I said, I've never heard of a golf course that has free golf for kids or anybody. And I'm not saying that that's the reason why not to do it. I just think about if we're going to do it for golf, we should do it for baseball, for softball, for every sport that we have in our community, I would think. I don't know. But those are just the concerns I have. And I apologize if my presentation wasn't everything that you would hope for, but I gave it my best shot.
No, I'm not knocking your presentation. I just, when I saw the presentation, I reached out to the golf coaches to go through the information so that I had an understanding as a policymaker, so we could talk intelligently about it. I still think it's a good thing, especially with everything that's going on in the world right now of COVID. And you've had kids that have missed graduation. You've had their lives disrupted. We can't do anything for all of them, but why not partner with the sports teams that use our facilities? I think that's just did well.
Mayor, may I have a moment? This is Council, Councilor Nelson.
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Mike, fabulous job. And I'm sorry that Vice Mayor did not feel that you, you did adequately and had to go behind you and double check your work. I trust your numbers. I trust you. And frankly speaking, we can't. If we start handing it out to one, we're going to hand it out to them all. And we're running in the red as Vice Mayor Lincoln felt you brought up. So seriously, why are we giving away free stuff? Sorry, not happy about this whole statement. And that was just disrespectful completely, Vice Mayor.
Counselor Melo Keener.
Yeah, I, I actually got off for some reason. So I missed what, most of what Councilwoman Nelson said. So I might repeat her remarks. I'm not sure. But yeah, there are costs associated with most sports, cheerleading, all the stuff I used to be in. There was a cost. We did fundraisers. I just absolutely do not think we're going to cater to one sport that just doesn't bode well for us as a community, that we care about everyone in all the sports. You know, I have grandkids on, in dance. I'm sure we're, I know that their parents would appreciate having that for free, but it's not an option. But we do appreciate the program that Parks and Rec does for dance, that, that low fee that they do charge. So yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement. No, we can't give it away for free. And I do appreciate you, Mr. Mearsman, for all that you do, for sure.
Any other comments? This is not an action item, by the way, but any other comments?
Mayor, if I could, just wanted to, to work in that the, the question about promotions, one of the things that, that Mike and I are constantly working on, talking about is how to attract more people to the, the golf course and to get hooked on, on the game because it takes a couple of good shots and, and people get hooked. I know that, I, I know that he covered his promotional, kind of the promotional items that we, that we have or programs that we've been working on. I actually do think that Mike had indicated that we are looking at being able to give a golf clinic a month. And the other thing, Vice Mayor, that I would, I would just point out as, as a golfer is that maybe, maybe perhaps we're looking at this in, in the wrong light. A golfer, people that are good at golf didn't get good at golf by playing rounds. They got, they, they, they were good because they hit buckets of balls and played and spent a lot of time on chipping greens and putting greens. And so, you know, as, as we talk about this and as we look at promotions, that's, you know, where golfers get good is in those areas. And maybe what we could do is, is look at offering hitting range opportunities rather than rounds of golf as part of our youth effort.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor, I would just like to respond to Councilor Nelson's comment about me. If I don't understand a number, then I reserve the right as an elected member of this council to go and talk to the golf coaches to get their take. I don't think there's anything underhanded by that. I don't think there's anything underhanded by that. That's talking to community members.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. And since this is not a discussion item, and I would again like to thank Mr. Mearsman for and the whole golf team for all the work they're doing. And I'm going to move on to the last department report, which is community branding presentation.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, so let me, can I share the screen?
Uh, you may, but I was going to turn it over to Manager Fogg in the introduction.
Go ahead, sorry.
We're we're jumping the gun just a little bit. That we obviously, this is a project that is near and dear to our hearts. Gary Kellogg and and his team have been working on this, I would say tirelessly because we know how important it is. We we've covered this subject a bunch in when we talked about the budget and ideas that we have moving forward. So I I would like to give just a second to Gary Kellogg. Just just to to share with you all the effort that he and his team have made and the work that they've done, the great work that they've done with the consultant. And I want also put in that I'm as excited as everybody else to see the presentation.
Thank you, Ron, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As the city manager alluded to, we we have been months in this process. And we, in the selection process, we really went over, certainly, you know, cost is always a consideration when you're putting something like this out to bid. But more than that, as we really looked for a, an Arizona-based company who could reflect the, you know, the rural ideas. And so with that, we selected Geo Marketing. And they really, I think, came through for us here. The committee consisted of a number of staff. Josh was part of this. Lisa came on, Louis a little bit later in the program, but she has a marketing degree. Bennett was involved, Bennett Bradley, Jean Kirkham represented the Economic Development Advisory Commission. Colleen, our P I and myself were involved in the in this process. So we we spent a lot of time and I know with that, I really want to turn it over to to Theo Serrano, who is the, who will be presenting on behalf of Geo Marketing. So tonight you will see it for the first time. Is there some tweaking? I will tell you, even during the COVID, we continued to work on this. We thought we could get it out earlier, but COVID sort of stalled everything a little bit for us. But it also gave us the opportunity to continue to tweak and tweak and tweak. And so tonight you'll see the culmination of that. And when Theo's complete, I also will have available a quite a long printed out that will come to you guys in a booklet form. But tonight I will turn that over to Theo and he'll take it from there.
All right. Thank you all. And before we share the screen, I just want to say I'm not alone. I have Mitch Eskrit next to me. And I have Georgia Lacy, the President and CEO of Geo. And we all worked together with all each of our staffs during the campaign that's we've been conducting over the past five, five and a half, six months. So let me, if I could, share the screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so here we go. I'm going to give you a quick executive summary. The city of Kingman came together to solidify and unify a brand. We were, as Gary had mentioned, very enthused and and excited that we were contracted to execute the brand refresh for Kingman. The brand strategy included two phases. Phase one consisted of the research phase with seven focus groups along with research analytics. Phase two consisted of using all the combined research to develop the overall destination brand strategy for the city of Kingman. And that includes internal and external action plans. So let's get into it right away. This is what we're showing you now is about half the documentation that Gary has for the completed brand strategy. This phase one research review took place from October through December of 2019. It included the following. We spent over 80 hours in discovery phase reviewing all existing research. We had made multiple visits to Kingman, experiencing local activities, restaurants, tourism, and and feeling the city out on a personal basis. We had multiple conversations with Gary Kellogg and his staff, including in-person meetings, reviewed hundreds of pages of past and current research conducted by the city of Kingman, including some of those that you see there on your screen. Phase one also consisted, it was a hands-on approach, included multiple touring visits, surrounding landmarks, learning about the rich history in the city of Kingman. The seven focus groups that were conducted, they included key stakeholders, including citizens and representatives from the lodging, restaurant and major visitor attractions in the community. All were engaged to provide their knowledge and firsthand insight about their views on branding the city. And much many of you in the, on this call tonight, on this Zoom conference, were part of that process. The question, all the questions were focused specifically to building the brand. And on more, more, more focused were brand values, brand awareness, brand association, brand equity and brand image. All were utilized to ascertain the dimensions of the city of Kingman's destination brand. The objective of our research was to identify Kingman's strongest and most competitively appealing assets to to prospective visitors and and to define who you all are going to become. And we did this by defining past and current research available, history, culture, typography, way of life, built in natural environment, along with the people of Kingman. All of this we took into consideration to create the brand. Phase two in the executive summary, the brand itself. We created, as I just said, all from these firsthand observations, the results from the focus groups, surveys and interviews of key stakeholders and community members. We feel this brand strategy plan delivers a cohesive, dynamic brand blueprint because you're not going to be able to implement it all. What you'll have today is a beautiful shiny logo, but then you'll have a blueprint of how to go forward to implement that at, well, post-COVID and as budget dictates for future endeavors. But this brand blueprint includes logo development, messaging, a brand standard guide, design and artwork that communicates the brand through a variety of different mediums. We feel that positions Kingman as an attractive, affordable tourist destination in the region and a community of choice for visitors, residents and businesses. It also includes phase two in internal and external action plans. These are recommendations on visitor marketing, including external and and internal brand management and adoption strategies for creating awareness of your brand. Because once you have this beautiful shiny object, what do you do with it? If we don't tell anybody, then you just have a beautiful shiny object that's going to get dull over time. Its success will come with an actual marketing strategy and implementation plan, a buy-in on internal and external messaging that everyone will hold close and all believe in. Follow-up tracking, we recommend it will be necessary to keep track of the overall implementation, overall brand strategy. So in a nutshell, that's sort of the phase one and phase two of what we did while creating this brand. So we can get into it. We also looked at the market. The city of Kingman, we believe, is poised for continued growth. The numbers and all the research we've done bear this out. Understanding the market, the visitor market to Kingman will lead to better communication and more effective outreach to this market. I won't bore you with all these details because Gary said he had a handout for you all at the end. But we looked at a few things, where they're coming from, domestically, internationally, the top five reasons why they visited. And again, if you look when you're starting to read this on your own at a later date, you'll see that take where they're coming, I'll I'll just scroll through that. I'll point it there. Where they're coming from domestically. We took this from the 2019 year-to-date visitor center guestbook statistics. So each one, we reference where we got this information from. As an example, top five reasons why they visited of those reporting, 85% of the 9,452 respondents, this is from the 2019 year-to-date visitor center guestbook statistics. And yes, we worked closely with Josh Noble and closely with Gary and the team, the brand team, to look at all the data. We're talking, going back from, gosh, I don't even remember, 1996, I think there was some in there, Gary? I mean, it goes back a long way, all the way up through your economic development report, through Josh Noble's tourism reporting, up until the most current, and we cross-tabulated them. We looked at everything going into it. We looked at advanced planning from 2016 and 17 Kingman visitor survey results. We looked at demographic mix of travelers, the average size of the party of traveling party, how many people, how people heard about Kingman, the purpose of the reason why they were traveling, other cities and attractions they visited, areas of interest that they were interested in, event interest. We looked at hotel occupancy and hotel selection through national research as well as local research that we were privy to. We looked at the Buxton Report and Visitor Snapshot, looking at visitor insights, credit card spend distribution, segmentation of visitors, both residents and regional residents. And so taking all that into consideration with the research we did with the focus groups, we then broke it down into a competitive environment and analysis. So what's your competitor environment? Kingman has a strong competition for tourism. The I-40 Route 66 path is full of similar cities and destinations that have very similar unique offerings, tourism, dining and lodging. So while all have their little unique niche, they're all similar. So how do we stand out? We took that into consideration as well. In the state of Arizona alone, Kingman is competing with Route 66 neighbors, Williams, Flagstaff, Lake Havasu, Prescott and Grand Canyon West. Not to mention in Arizona alone, you have Phoenix, Sedona, the Grand Canyon, the White Mountains. All of these are tourist destinations just in Arizona. So not only you're competing with your close neighbors that are right next to you, you're also competing with other entertainment and travel dollars within the state of Arizona. So with for Kingman to compete with other destinations, we developed a defined brand strategy with engaging messaging that is delivered to, we think will deliver to this audience. We then went in to do a current condition SWOT analysis. So Kingman's current position is strong. You have a lot going for you, yet undefined and lacking unity. And again, this is meant with no disrespect. We were objective analysis of this. Kingman has no brand voice. Well, that's because there's been very little marketing engagement to the massive number of visitors that pass Kingman every day. Yet there are so many strengths and opportunities for Kingman without many the typical threats facing most small-town tourist destinations. So you have so much going for you. Some of your strengths include, and I won't get into all of this just to keep it going, to get you to the juicy part, the actual logo and the brand. But some of the strengths include the location and proximity to major landmarks like Route 66 and the Grand Canyon. Now, this one point goes to how we tied into all this, all the focus groups that we did, all the research analysis, everything that had been done from from the latest report in 2019, your economic development report, to Josh Noble's most current statistics of everyday people visiting the visitor center. Yep. And so with that said, we we took all of this into consideration and felt that that was a strength. So then we'll go through and you look at some of your weaknesses. And if I'm going too fast, please let me know, chime in, but I I want to get through it all and you guys will have this to read at a later date. So we listed out your threats like a lack of a coordinated effort, local or local organizations and for not-for-profit businesses promote Kingman and Route 66 all separately, causing a confusion to the target audience with inconsistent messages. There's at least three different websites we found that promote Kingman tourism, any of which could be mistaken for the official Kingman visitor site. But fortunately, the city's site, gokingman.com consistently came up first in online searches. And thanks, Josh Noble, for doing that. Your organic search is good, which puts you guys at least at the mind of of the viewer that's looking. We also looked at opportunities. You're the gateway between Phoenix and Las Vegas. It positions you guys. You benefit from a huge amount of short-term visitor traffic. Historic Route 66 significance and tourism opportunities. We just need to determine how to convert pit stop visitors into short-term and long-term or repeat visitors. You have steady year-over-year increases in gift shop sales and visitor center traffic over the next several years with the right branding and market positioning. Businesses and commercial vacancies provide opportunities for fresh growth for from new business concepts. You have an opportunity to revitalize downtown by making it a welcoming destination for locals and visitors. Art walks, concerts, gastronomy tours, gift shops, scavenger hunts, bake sales, 5K runs. A lot of stuff you're doing, but there's still a lot of room there for improvement to drive to drive traffic. Cross-promotion of opportunities exists with local tourist attractions to encourage visitors. So we looked at that. Getting into the brand identity, and this is the start of it, and we're almost there. The objective was to rebrand the city of Kingman to solidify an authentic unified image for the community that resonates with residents and visitors alike. Much of the city of Kingman's, as I mentioned earlier, and I have to say it again, of your strongest advocates do not know what the current theme, brand or tagline that is currently in use, which indicates the brand has no or little equity. The research indicated important factors for consideration to include messaging around. And this is from the focus groups as well as all the external and research that we uncovered. A hub, a gateway, Route 66, outdoor activities, climate, that you have a temperate, moderate, favorable climate. The friendliness of your city and history. So we took these these tenants into consideration when creating the branding core message. We created a brand that focuses on the emotional benefits that your brand will convey and what your brand means to your target market. This brand message for the city of Kingman is incorporated into the new logo design. Our strategy and our goals for the brand development from the very start was to deliver a cohesive, dynamic brand strategy blueprint. We've discussed it a little bit. You guys are not, you're not a startup city. You already have residents, businesses, a history, a culture, a set of values. The attempt to radically shift away from that is not being honest to your brand. And we don't think it would be to create something that you're not would would not be successful. The brand needs to be authentic, speaking to the people who already live in the city as well as to provincial, potential visitors. It needs to be an expression or reflection of the history, heritage and reality that already exist in Kingman. And we think we did a good job taking that into consideration. So the three keys that we took away from that were develop a brand identity that is truly authentic, position Kingman as the community of choice for visitors, residents and businesses, and position Kingman as an attractive, affordable tourist destination in the region. So here's the logo. The new brand sets stands for and represents the uniqueness of Kingman. It creates a sense of place. It highlights the distinctive attributes that Kingman has to offer and works them into the overall look and feel of the brand. The visual verbal messaging that is associated will differentiate Kingman when marketing the brand. Kingman is rugged, adventurous and unafraid. Don't be afraid to get out and explore. This is Kingman. And so when we talk about those five tenants before I flip the page, and we'll we'll have time for, if you guys want to ask questions, feel free, but we'll have time at the end for questions. When you look at a hub or a gateway, Route 66, the outdoor activities, the climate, the friendliness, the history, all of this is is worked into the color scheme, the layout, the retro-ness of the logo and the feeling of it, as well as the modern appeal to Kingman established 1882. Explore. So those are the key tenants of the logo that we worked it worked in with a coloring scheme and all of that. And again, as Gary mentioned, I think we went through about 15 or 16 iterations of the logo with the team back and forth over the last couple of months as we evolved it into what you see before you today, a true representation of what Kingman truly is. So now, okay, let's put some meat behind the background of your logo and your brand, the mission statement. This, the mission statement is about what your people do every day in the present in order to achieve the overall vision. Our mission is to greet every visitor with a smile and help create a great adventure, one visitor at a time, showing them why the city of Kingman is the gateway to be adventurous, to explore, seek out history, heritage and the great outdoors. This covers all the topics of what you should be, in your advocates, should be talking to potential and and current tourists and visitors every single day. Your core benefits. Kingman is the ultimate destination hub where you're greeted with a smile as as the hub from which you launch your next adventure. Explore the surrounding outdoors and enjoy beautiful year-round weather. Adventure starts here. Get out and explore. Those should be your core benefits. The vision of what Kingman is, this is the long term. It looks towards the future and forms the direction, the morale and the spirit of the of the of the organization. And here it is as follows. Our vision is to share with the world what Kingman truly is, friendly and eclectic. Friendly and eclectic with a sense of community, rugged, adventurous and unafraid, the destination gateway to get out and explore. And finally, the destination brand personality, the personality of who you are. Your branch should aim to elicit a positive emotional response from a targeted consumer segment. This is because your brand personality results in increased brand equity and defines your brand's attitude in the marketplace. The city of Kingman's brand personality traits include exciting, spirited, fun and creative, rugged, outdoorsy, tough, athletic. And but you're sincere at the same time. You're humble, you're down-to-earth, you're honest, you're natural, you're holistic, you have kindness, you're integrated and you're creative. That's the spirit of Kingman and those are your destination brand personality traits. So our brand promise, understanding the city of Kingman's brand promise will be an important asset for brand ambassadors going forward. And so when they get out there, what's our elevator speech? We strive to create a date, a great destination experience for everyone who visits and to serve as the gateway for exploring Route sixty six and the great outdoors beyond. We strive to provide a culture of friendliness, greeting every visitor with a smile and where every visitor is welcome. And what's your brand voice? The brand voice must display your brand's personality or reflecting the core values of the consumer. Kingman is historic and nostalgic, a friendly pace with a sense of community. Kingman is the gateway to launch your exploration or just hang out, relax and enjoy all in your own time, no hurries, no rushing. Kingman is rugged, adventurous and unafraid, a place where you can dare to be different. So that that takes you through the sort of the backbone of your brand and the talking points within the promise, the voice and all of that. A brand standard and usage guidelines manual will be presented upon final adoption by the city. But let's get into now visitor. Does anyone have any questions? No, okay, I'll keep going. So visitor marketing strategies. This is how we're going to have adoption internally and externally and simply recommendations. So you're perfectly situated at the intersection of two major interstates between two substantial visitor magnets in the southwest, the Grand Canyon and the Las Vegas slash Hoover Dam. Kingman is also in the middle of the Sun Corridor that links multiple regional trails and you benefit from this large-scale marketing initiative. You, Kingman needs to establish a viable marketing message to be relevant and to create brand awareness. So now we have this great brand packaging, but if we do nothing with it, then what happens? People drive right by us. That's, that's, that's the reality of it. Also of importance is Kingman is the fact that the current visitor traction is largely tied to the nostalgia of America's Main Street, Route sixty six, and the preservation of the community's cultural heritage, historic buildings and pride in its roots as a pioneering western town. The history of Kingman gives the town its character and uniqueness, which has powerful appeal across the globe. People want nostalgia, they want this and you guys have it. So how do we first take the brand? And we have an internal brand management and adoption strategy. So we put some tactics together for you guys to increase internal brand dissemination. The goal is to create such a compelling brand that everybody in town wants to adopt it. I know Gary was pushing very hard and he wants this logo on all the, all the cars. So you update to your official city flag, you add the city vehicles, logos on police cars, fire trucks, et cetera. You add to the buildings, you encourage placing your brand throughout Realtor community on cards, on stationery. You have brand educational PowerPoint presentation for use by the city. You adopt it into T-shirts, so you sell at your visitor's center. And by the way, of the, of the multiple logos that we have, there's some others that, any logo that we developed and Gary and I were talking about this. So there's some really cool ones where we got super artistic and did some illustration and some of the, some of the veteran committee members that reviewed it loved it. So I think that would be a great T-shirt for you guys. And so any of those logos that were developed obviously are yours to have and to use and to sell in the visitor's center for T-shirts. Cause that's a, what a wonderful way to, to represent the brands, to get it out there for every visitor. I know I'd wear a few of these T-shirts myself, so. External brand management and adoption strategies. So these are tactics to increase visitor count and increase brand awareness. There's several of them here, so I'll go through them quickly. The first is signage. We think you need to change out wayfinding signs to own Route sixty six. Right now you have old, well, I'll get to that one. Change out the Andy Devine Road to more clearly marked Route sixty six signage that Kingman owns. Signage needs to be updated and painted. The pink Route sixty six plan needs to be updated and refreshed while still maintaining the distinctive Kingman brand, rugged, adventurous, unafraid. This is a cool Route sixty six possibility or a variation of this, so you can update your sixty six signs so that when people are coming through your stretch, which is the largest stretch, they know they're in Kingman. And they want to stop and get a souvenir. They want to stop and have food. Website. We think you need to update, refresh is recommended. The current Kingman site has amazing, great information. But we need to simplify the overall interface, making it easier for user engagement and find content they're looking for. We provided a few sample pages below that are simple. Here's where you get food and drinks. Here's things to do. Here's where to stay. Here's how easy it is to visit Kingman. So that's just a recommendation. Number three, we think you need to promote downtown Kingman and Route sixty six by implementing one big event per year in the first year, followed in year two and beyond, one larger event per quarter. The first event recommended is downtown days, a week-long event backed by marketing to local and regional target audiences. As we, as you may have noticed, as I glanced over it, a lot of your travel comes from the general area. So you have a large opportunity to hit people that are here. You don't have to get them from Germany right away. You can, you can concentrate on, on the regional aspect of it. Create a new year event for Route sixty six to attract local and regional target audiences back by marketing push. Get your pics on Route sixty six. You guys have an amazing, amazing new sign that is just going up. How cool would that be to create an event where people are driving through and they get their pics on Route sixty six and they post them on social media? It's a super cool idea and you can use something you just, just launched or you're just about to launch if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Lifestyle product development is number four. We think develop something that has potential simultaneously morph into a lifestyle brand product line. This will drive sales and profits for the city of Kingman in the long run. Again, we talked about T-shirts. There's at least four of those cool logos that are already T-shirt worthy. And we think that this brand as well would, would well, really wear well on glasses, on T-shirts, on on coffee mugs, on coasters. It fits right. It feels good. So tourism efforts, strategy and tactical execution. So we not, we think you need to reach out and connect with the visitor market in order to increase your brand awareness. The strategies, as we know, there's a lot of people, the, the number of days that people stay there, it's a pit stop as opposed to a destination or a add-on to the main destination. And we think you can do that. If you connect and increase brand awareness. The strategies and tactical executions laid out in the following pages, they can be implemented immediately, can expect to have near-term effect. And were reiterated by the city of Kingman two thousand nineteen Economic Development Strategy Report. In that report, they said similar things that you have to get your brand out there and you have to disseminate it. So some of the strategic and tactical executions could be a sustained marketing presence with external media to drive destination brand awareness and continue to engage the visitor market. Increase brand awareness. It allows for the brand to evolve. Number two, focus on smaller, more attainable goals first. That means, great, we see visitors from Canada or visitors from Germany, but when you have a larger percentage of your visitors come from California and Arizona, why wouldn't we use, utilize those dollars first and then build outward? So what we're saying is it's obtainable. It doesn't have to be this, okay, well, if we only had the budget, we can do this. As opposed to, you know what? We know we can capture these people that are driving by anyway, right now through, through Arizona and California. So focus on smaller, more attainable goals first. Build outing engagement efforts from there. So as I was just saying, you focus efforts on and budget on top two to three domestic states with highest visitor stats. And as budget allows, do add in top two to three international markets. So you don't go after them all at once. You just sort of eat the elephant one bite at a time. Continuing on, implement a comprehensive external marketing mix. And what that means is it includes social and digital advertising, event and community outreach and public relations. To define those social and digital, there's content creation built around this brand and all the tenants of which you stand for. You're the hub, a gateway to Route sixty six, outdoor activities, climate, friendliness, history. All of those tenants that are all part of your brand need to be built into content for social media, for engagement. And social engagement, overall objective is to develop a social communications platform that can be accomplished through social media page development with organic and paid targeted social media across multiple social media platforms. So you all have the same messaging, search engine marketing, organic optimization. Now, a lot of these ideas are going to be hopefully taken and implemented by Josh. He's a smart character, so I have, I have no doubt that, that he'll implement those. But we wanted to provide them because this is what we, what needs to happen next for Kingman to start having a brand voice in the market to compete for those people's dollars that are traveling by. So the next thing is number four, targeted paid social across several different platforms like Google Search, Google Search Partner, Content Ad Network, Local Ad Placement. You need to target and retarget them and you could do that relatively inexpensively, especially to the top two to three markets. Media outreach needs to take place across the social media platforms like Facebook, YouTube, Instagram, website engagement. Revamp website a bit, just a bit. You saw those samples. You have the content already there. It just needs to kind of a refresh to match the brand. But you can revamp the website to include updated brand content and themes to increase visitor page views and page visits. Pixel placement on your website to retarget visitors that are already there visiting anyway. Increase case ease of use to increase visitor page views. Add a trackable URL path and dedicated domain that will be trackable on Google Analytics. And then of course you need reporting, transparency and KPI reviews. So if you implement any of these things, no matter what you implement, we recommend that you put immediate reporting in there and KPIs. So you can look, you could see what your return on, return on investment is going to be. So moving into advertising, so the advertising part of it. We implement a dedicated advertising strategy with a developed scope of work, steps for implementation of the tourism marketing outreach. And that should include media planning, media percentages, the media plan, traffic it, and again, reporting, transparency and KPI reviews to know exactly where your budget goes. And again, it all sounds like a lot, but if you focus on only your top two or three visitor destinations that are right within your reach, that are right next to your next door neighbors essentially, then it does, it's, it's not like by trying to eat a whole elephant. It's taking one bite at a time. And then event and community outreach, we recommend that as well. And I'll just be brief. Tactics to increase visitor count and increase brand awareness could be event-specific scope of work and press release timelines to be established. All media outlets negotiated with for participation in station events that are appropriate. You guys are already doing some cool events throughout the, that, 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 I don't know if you're necessarily marketing. So we think that if you get a PR campaign going, that you could really take advantage of, of all that you're doing there. Another key tactic for these events would be submitting a video showcasing the Kingman brand. You could start it on your social media site and go from there. Personalized touch is unbeatable for establishing a relationship with the community and providing the necessary information to the public as well. So if we're not telling people about it and not expanding the reach, then it's not as effective as if we're telling the masses. A PSA toolkit should be established for internal, external distribution. So no matter who's doing the event internally, you guys will know what to do and what to take into consideration. Externally, you know who to reach out to, what reporters you're going to reach in the markets. And the toolkit should consist of logos, graphics, ads, press release template for the particular event. And then public relation tactics to increase visitor count. You should have a scope of work and a release of timelines established. You should have press releases distributed to all traditional media outlets. You should have a digital PR strategy to help become top of mind with the media. So when something's happening, you know, you can email a set of thirty or forty reporters across the region, across the southwest, depending on what your, what your event is, and they'll get it and they could publish it. So moving on to the final page, any questions?
Come on. So much. No, I just got off mute. I'll ask the council, but first, first I will, I'll just say the logo is really captivating. It reminds me of the image I always have driving into Kingman with the sun coming, with the sun and the beautiful mountains and the Mother Road. And the color, the way the colors are done, it's really captured that image in my mind. I'm still getting used to rugged, adventurous and unafraid. I can see those elements in us and I just have to. I love the explorer and I, and I do think that this as a community is. I know we're adventurous and as a people, we have been rugged and unafraid. So I really appreciate you pulling all of these many, many, many aspects of our community into something with a tagline and messaging like, like this. But I'd like to open it up to the council for questions or comments.
If I may real fast, one thing I'd be remiss if I didn't, am I, can you hear me?
Yes.
One thing I'd be remiss and Gary will kill me if I don't say this. One of his key tenants was that we can take explore here and we can change it to whatever we want to be. We think you're rugged, adventurous and afraid. That's not something you have to use. We think explore is the meat of the logo. However, that can be changed out and anything can be put right there. Discover whatever you want it to be, but explore is where we start with the brand that has so many endless possibilities. And thank you for noticing the nostalgia of the logo because it's sort of a retro hip, modern take on, on Kingman. So it has some modern elements to it, but it also has that retro, the nostalgia, the history, the mother road. So yeah, thank you for noticing that and I'll, I'll shut up now, take questions.
Thank you. Okay, counselors, Vice Mayor, comments, questions?
So I'll just jump in and say that I think this is fabulous. I would, I think it's been about three and a half years since we first started having the conversation about doing this. And so it's been worth the wait because this is a comprehensive plan. I like the logo. I like everything that you've come up with. I think that you really did take the feedback that you got because I know it was diverse. And you, you made something that everybody will like and get behind. And so I'm really excited about this. Thank you very much.
Well, we think you're fabulous. Thank you.
Looks good. It's, it's a lot of, a lot of everything that Kingman has. So it's, it's exciting. I like it.
Thank you. That's the authentic part, right? So it doesn't diverge from what and what Kingman is. So that's what's awesome about it.
That's right. It looks, it's the image of Kingman to me. And thank you, Counselor Nelson. Any, any other comments? Well, I appreciate that this is the first presentation. We're just seeing this. And so, and also your comments that there are still, these things could be tweaked, if you will. I think explore was an interesting word because we're trying to get people off the road. That's part of the objective here and that certainly is an invitation, which, which is very nice. So could you share with us a little bit, perhaps it's Manager Foggan or Mr. Kellogg about the next steps of how we, it's a very comprehensive package that you've given us. And I know that's going to take time to work on all of this. But just the next steps on the buy-in and the community understanding of this new, this new logo and tagline and the, and the campaign behind it.
Ron, you want me to jump in or?
Yeah, sure.
One of the things is, is, you know, we certainly can, now it's really up to us to begin to roll this out. The community buy-in really came through, I think, the focus groups and all the work that we went through in the public part. So now it's how, how do we take this? Much the same way I believe that we have done with the economic development strategy. Now we will have in place these guidelines. So, you know, one of the things that we, we really looked at was to say, okay, if we're using this logo, you know, and we can pull that word explore out, what do we insert there for an example on another phrase that may appeal more to the site selector when we utilize this in the economic development? that may appeal more to the site selector when we utilize this in the economic development side? And so, um, I think now it'll really be up to us to take a look at all of our websites and begin to tweak these things that, that Geo has suggested to us that, that work and, and stuff. So now, you know, uh, like I said, Josh has been certainly part of the team. So, you know, we'll look at our aviation website, we will look at our ED website, we'll look at our tourism information and start to do that. But, you know, one of the things that we hope we certainly have here is now that logo that we can begin to change. You know, we've looked at something that had a little bit of a modern kick, but retro. And I guess really mayor, kind of like when you light up our sign tomorrow night, you know? We've embraced the old school, but you know, we've got this brilliant new sign. So I think maybe now it's really up to, you know, us as a city and certainly my team to start to incorporate this. And it's not going to happen overnight, kind of like the economic development strategy. But we have the tools in place, we have a reference point to come back to all the time and say, all right, don't steer off the path, we know that this will work. So Ron, I think if you want to jump in from there.
Yeah, thanks, Gary. And I, I, to be, um, I'm, I, I need to say I'm just blown away. This is of course the first time I've seen it. Uh, I'm already picturing it, um, on our marketing material. I've actually already loving this logo on the side of our vehicles. I, I really do appreciate our team's work as well as Geo's, uh, work on it. So, um, Mayor, to answer your technical questions, uh, the next step, we've already had clearly a lot of community buy-in or comments on it. So it becomes our responsibility to take this and roll it out. Uh, I would say that I see this coming, being on the next council agenda to be approved by the council if, uh, I'm kind of seeing a lot of heads nodding. But we would have this for the next, um, agenda. And if it passes, uh, as a, you know, as the, the strategy for how we're going to do branding development, and that this is going to be our logo, that we would immediately look to, to incorporating, as Gary said, having this land in all of our websites and, and rolling it out. You know, it's pretty, pretty darn easy to, to have this be part of our electronic signatures moving forward. You know, some of that stuff, obviously, uh, as, as been indicated, we don't eat elephants, but if we did, we would do it one bite at a time. And so we, we will look at how we're going to do that. I think that I spent some time talking about what we were going to look to do with this logo with signage wise. I mean, this is a great sign, this is a great logo for our monument entry signs that we talked about. So we'll immediately start looking at, um, having those designed after the council officially adopts it as the logo for the city. And so I, I, I can see a whole bunch of places where we can immediately start introducing and showing the world and our community this, this logo.
And if I may, um, how cool would that be for the aviation side? If you just say fly instead of explore, fly Kingman. That's something as simple as that. Discover, build, um, there's so many words that represent grow uh, for the, for the economic development side, but I think the fly one for the aviation could be really cool. Fly Kingman.
I have available now, uh, Mayor, the electronic form and it's quite extensive, his report, uh, much larger than this. So I will make it available and, and Ron can distribute accordingly. Uh, also, I, the copies of the, uh, of everything that was reported tonight, but a very detailed uh, book, much similar to the, to the development strategy that it was done by, for us by Chavon, so.
Great, that sounds great. Well, I like that, that you can kind of modify that word to the, to these situations. So, but, uh, wow, I'll just say it. I, I was sitting here saying, I won't say wow, I'll say wow. It's just, uh, it's great. And, um, I think people will really immediately feel like, yes, this is our home. And, or yes, this is a place that maybe we should explore. So thank you so much and we'll look forward to it on the next. Well, thank you to the whole Geo team. And we'll look forward to, to it on the next agenda.
Thank you. We'll work with Gary to complete everything that we need to and, and have a good night, everyone.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. Okay, um, we'll move on then to announcements by Mayor, city council members or city manager. Uh, Manager Foggan, do you have any announcements?
Uh, yes, I actually do. As part of our ongoing commitment to census twenty twenty, I need to give a, a short, little, quick announcement that we continue to lead, uh, the region in, in the census. And, uh, we are so, uh, proud of our, our task force and everybody in the community that have stepped up. We've actually, we've actually beat twenty ten officially, uh, on reporting, which is really cool. And this last week, uh, we had, uh, help from our public works folks and our census task force to go hang, uh, door hangers, reminding people to take the census in, in our lower, uh, in our area that has lower count, hoping to get more people to, to sign on, uh, from that. We won't know kind of the results of that for another week or so, but we're happy about that. We continue, of course, to deal with COVID. And, uh, again, uh, we worked through these, these trials uh, as, as a team, appreciate the mayor and everything that she's done on, on helping us communicate with the, not only the community, but also with, uh, the state and federal representatives that have been trying to help push, uh, uh, help to cities and to our businesses and to our residents. And, uh, one final thing, Mayor, is I was kind of hoping that, um, I'd have a better direction on, uh, kind of this, the golf item. Uh, so it looks like, uh, based on kind of the conversation, that we'll have that back for some kind of action because we, it was not clear as to a direction. So those are my announcements.
Okay, um, okay, I'll just leave it at that. Counselor Watkins.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and of course fellow counselors. And I, as always, I want to thank all those who, uh, work for the city and all the tireless work that is put in and, uh, we have a great city. They do a great, they do a great job. I was looking at that logo again and, you know, where it says, uh, Kingman, you know, of course, explore. And instead of explore, I like the idea that was suggested, you can change different names, different, I put different sayings there. One thing came to mind, call it home, you know? You know, call it home. And it is, it's home for a lot of good people and, uh, I appreciate all those who, uh, come into my life and, and give me, and build me up with positive experiences. Of course, all I can say is let's be safe and stay healthy.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilman Wade.
I have nothing to add at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Staley.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Counselor Nelson.
Uh, nothing other than just everybody stay healthy and it's good to start seeing some activity around the community. Remember your small businesses, those little guys out there are, are needing all of our support. So take care of them too. Thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Melo Keener.
I do have something. I just wanted to thank Kathy Hicks and Peacock Nuts for their two thousand dollar donation that went to Parks and Recs. It helped pay for movies in the parks, it helped with the pools, the drive-in movies. And with COVID going on, there's not a lot for kids to do. And this was a safe way to have social distancing and still get to go do something in the evenings with your family. So we're very grateful for the, for their generous gift to our city.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also say, uh, thank you to everybody in the community that's doing everything they can to support our small businesses that had to close for over a month. And it is great to see some activity out there. As far as the golf issue, um, Andrew Foggan, if you need an email from me to withdraw that item, uh, I'll, I'll plan on withdrawing that, that item. It didn't sound like there was enough support for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Manager Foggan, I'll just let you discuss that with Vice Mayor and make a decision on where, where that goes on or not. And for me, I just wanted to take a minute because I found out that May seventeenth through twenty-third is the Emergency Medical Services Week. And this is a nationally recognized week. And this is applied to our EMTs, our paramedics, emergency nurses and physicians, nine-one-one dispatchers and EMS educators. And boy, what an appropriate time for all these people who have been on the front line to be honored and recognized. And so I didn't want this moment to go by, even though we did not have a formal proclamation. I just wanted to convey our sincere thank you again, uh, and again and again, uh, for all the, the work that you do and, and the risks that you take to make sure that the rest of us stay safe and healthy. And I would add even, um, beyond the health, uh, situations. I know last night, uh, in our home, we, we noticed that there was smoke in the air. And I know that our responders went out last night and put out a, a fire. And, and I was thinking how much we rely on all of these people who put themselves in harm's way so that we are safe. And so very genuine hearts, heartfelt thank you to our, to all of our, um, EMS emergency agencies. So that's all I have for this evening. And so, um, I guess I would ask if we have any requests for future reports or updates from council members? No requests, I'm hearing crickets, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion that we adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
All second.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor, aye.